Good evening, everyone. We will call our November 7, 2011 City Council meeting to order. First order of business is roll call and determination of the quorum. Charlene?
Nordstrom, Mason, Doyle, Sasso, Davis, Peterson, Roberts, Brown, Wright, Laurenti. We have quorum.
Thank you, Charlene. Next order of business is the invocation. Pastor Ron. Everyone, please rise.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Father God, we do. We thank you and praise you, Lord, for this evening and for this time in this place, Lord. We thank you, God, that you let us live where we live in this beautiful community. Lord, I thank you for these men and women in this room. I thank you for their willingness to lead and serve, and I pray that you just be with them tonight in all that they do and decide upon. And we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
(Inhales) I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Ron. Order of business is adoption of the agenda. Do we have any additions or changes to the agenda? We'll go to John Roberts. John?
I just want to add an announcement for the dedication of the Officers Memorial.
I have that as 85A. 85A. Announcement of Officers Memorial dedication. We will also be moving item 82. If it's okay with the council, move item 82 under General Public Comment. This is the Vision 2020 update. Jenny Nelson has requested to move that to the beginning of the agenda since she needs to leave in a little bit. And so if there's no objection, we will move 82 up under General Public Comment. Are there any additional changes to the agenda? Seeing none. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Roberts, second by Brown to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next order of business is to approve the minutes for October 17, 2011 Regular Council meeting. Do we have a motion?
Go.
Motion by Roberts, second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We do have a Citizen of the Month recognition, and if the Ward II Alderman would please join me down front. public service to the community. We are pleased to present this award to Kristy Thielen of Rapid City. She is a playwright who has written over 50 scripts. Her work has been performed at Storybook Island, Black Hills Community Theater, Girls Inc., Boys Club, seven local elementary schools, and Dakota Middle School, the Doll Fine Arts Center, Black Hills Workshop, West Boulevard Fair Heritage Festival, the Black Hills Amphitheater, Matthew's Opera House, West Hills Village, and the Journey Museum. Many of Kristy's scripts relate to local history and events. For example, she wrote a play about the 1972 flood called "Not Just High Water." She has had scripts published by Pioneer Drama Service and Brooklyn Publishers. In addition to local performances, her scripts have been performed in places throughout the United States and Canada. Kristy is the Director of Programs and Marketing at the Journey Museum, where she has also written two space science shows. Kristy chaired the Chamber of Commerce's Cultural Diversity Committee from 2002 to 2004. She worked on committees for the YFS Kids Fair and the Halloween Carnival. She was the recipient of a Wellspring We Believe in Kids Award in 2008 and was named Author of the Year in 2009. She is also a member of the West Boulevard Neighborhood Association and the Synagogue of the Hills. Kristy was nominated by her Ward Alderman, Richie Nordstrom, and Steve Laurenti. Richie says Kristy has brought excitement and enthusiasm to the Journey Museum that is contagious, is a joy to watch her having fun with the visitors, coworkers, and board members of the Journey Museum. And I will turn it over to Alderman Richie Nordstrom from Ward II to read the Executive Proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a great honor to get to do this for Kristy. The Executive Proclamation from the City of Rapid City of the Office of Mayor, whereas the City of Rapid City has established the Citizen of the Month Award to an individual whose second career has been public service to the community, and whereas the November 2011 Citizen of the Month is awarded to Kristy Thielen of Rapid City. Kristy is the Director of Programs and Marketing at the Journey Museum, and whereas Kristy is a playwright who has written over 50 scripts, her work has been performed at a variety of venues here in Rapid City, and whereas Kristy has been part of several committees throughout the city, including the Chamber of Commerce Cultural Diversity Committee and the YFS Kids Fair Committee, and whereas Kristy was the recipient of a Wellspring We Believe in Kids Award in 2008 and was named Author of the Year in 2009 by the South Dakota Council of Teachers of English. Now therefore, I, Richie Nordstrom, and Steve Laurenti, Aldermen of Rapid City, South Dakota, on behalf of Sam Quaker, Mayor of Rapid City, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim Kristy Thielen as the November 2011 Citizen of the Month recipient in recognition of her innovation and leadership and the many contributions she has made to our community. Thank you, Kristy.
Thank you so much. My birthday is in four days, so this is a nice early birthday present. And no, I will not be telling you how old I am. But I do want to tell you what a great honor this is and what a delight it is to work in the Rapid City community and to work in a vibrant entity like the Journey Museum, which is changing every month. I hope if you have not had a chance to visit recently, you will return to see all the new things we have, not only in programs but even on the floor. There's a free day coming up this Sunday. I know people are watching their panties, so if you do want to come by and see the museum on Sunday for free, if you bring some food for the Care and Share Food Drive, you can do so. Once again, thank you so much on behalf of the Journey Museum. I'm so pleased. Thank you.
Members of the public, to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda, action will not be taken at the meeting on any issue not on the agenda except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of council members present. Do we have any general speaker request forms? Okay. Would you not have any general speaker request forms? Is there anyone that had intended to speak under General Public Comment? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on then to item 82, and we'll recognize Jenny Nelson to give us a brief update on the 2020 program.
What I want to do is, first of all, I'm going to talk very fast. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. What I'm here to talk about is an overview of the 2020 strategic plan. And what I want to do is start with the history, talk about where we are presently and where we hope to go in the future. So again, this was based on the idea that the future should be by choice and not by chance, and that as such we should plan for its arrival. So the goal was to help develop a strategic plan that will help guide the city government in preparing for the future. We asked two questions in the fall and winter of 2009. And the first question was, how do you envision Rapid City looking in the year 2020? And the second question was, what would you like Rapid City to be in the year 2020? Well, here was the process. What we did was we asked the questions of stakeholders of the community, the City Council, department heads, city staff, and the Rapid City community through the Rapid City website. You can see here that there are the numbers. What I do want to let all of you council members know is that on the number 82, there's links to a number of documents, and I hope you take time to go out and look at these. The overview is there as well as some more particular information around the two goals that have been worked on. But first of all, in September of 2009, we had a meeting with 80 city leaders. Then what we did was we had a retreat with the department heads, and there were 15 people present there. I then met with the City Council in October of 2009. We had public input through the webpage, and that was actually open to the public for over three months. And then we also had Rapid City employee feedback. The total of all respondents was 260 individuals. The process then was, all of the responses were compiled. A steering committee of community stakeholders met four times. They were tasked with taking the responses from those 260 people to determine five goals for Rapid City to focus on. I want to just let you know what those five goals are. The first goal is that by 2020, Rapid City will be recognized as a leader in attracting and expanding and retaining diverse businesses that offer higher skilled positions and higher total compensation employment opportunities. This will be evidenced by growth that exceeds the national economic standards. Goal two is that Rapid City will develop by 2020 and implement a beautification program, beginning with the appearance of its entrances and expanding to the overall community that embodies a consistent theme which is welcoming, aesthetically pleasing, and pedestrian-friendly. The third goal is that by 2020, Rapid City will be nationally recognized by industry trade measures as a premier regional hub for health care, education, entertainment, tourism, retirement, business, technology, agriculture, and transportation. Fourth goal is that by 2020, Rapid City will develop an interconnected parks, arts, recreation system that provides diverse opportunities for enjoyment and adds to our family-friendly quality of life. And lastly, the fifth goal is that by 2020, Rapid City will have in place an accessible, affordable, convenient, and safe transportation system that addresses community needs. In April of 2010, the Rapid City Council approved the five strategic goals. At that point, the decision was made to begin by launching Goals One and Two, to focus on those first. The public was invited to join committees to work on creating strategies for accomplishing these two goals. The Goal One Committee was chaired by Jeff Karzrude, and Goal Two, the committee was first chaired by Linda Lee Viken and then by Pat Roseland. A complete list of the community members can be found in the linked documents on the reports from Goal One and Two. So the committee members have worked together for a year. The council has received presentations by Goal One and Goal Two to the council in both February, May, and June of 2011. So what were the committee's recommendations? Well, I think I'm almost done with my time. So what I'm hoping that you will do is go ahead and look at the linked documents. I think there's some very, very interesting information there. Let's start very briefly with Goal One. Goal One's goal was to create a baseline for where we were and where we currently are in the areas of wage per hour and diversity of industry, as well as other economic indicators. Goal One is currently working together in a partnership with Black Hills Vision and the Rapid City Economic Development to study current data to assist with creating the best strategies for the future. And as of today, that study should be done and those recommendations should be presented by the end of this year, at the very latest, the beginning of next year. Goal Two, where are they now? Well, the committee came up with five recommendations in orders of priorities. The first was to construct welcoming signs at major entrances to Rapid City. Two was to bury overhead utility lines. Three was remove or reduce billboards. Four was a more active code enforcement. And five was construct repair sidewalks, bike lanes, and bike trails connecting the city. So what are the next steps? Well, the next steps are that we are going to continue to work on Goals One and Two. We are going to then create strategies for launching Goals Three through Five. Currently, I have been speaking with the President, Dave Davis, about appointing new council members to Goals One and Two. I want to thank you so much for the opportunity to talk with you today. I think I kept it to three minutes. I look forward to continuing to work with you on this project. And have I used the whole three minutes? Okay. Are there any questions or comments that would like to be made before I sit down?
Jenny, I would just like to use this opportunity to say thank you for all the work that you've put into this. There are hundreds of people that have their voices heard through this process, and we look forward to implementation of these goals. So thank you very much for your assistance.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Our next order of business is the non-public hearing items, items one through 86. We're going to open public comment for items one through 71. Do we have a motion to open public comment for items one through 71?
Second.
Motion by Mason, second by Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are going to, first of all, go to, we have a number of speaker request forms on items 37 and 74. We're first going to go to Hanny Shaffey from Dream Design, representing President Shapla, who will give us a presentation on the project.
I was hoping, Mayor, good evening, Mayor and council members.
You had a half an hour, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I was hoping to do the presentation after the public comments so I could address any questions that may come up from the public in my presentation, if you would, please.
I think you would have an opportunity to address the concerns that the public raises after they ask their questions, but they haven't seen your presentation, so.
Okay.
That okay?
Whatever, whatever the wishes, your wishes in the council.
Is that okay with the committee?
As long as I'm given an opportunity to answer or address the questions, I'd be more than happy to. Thank you, sir.
Go ahead and proceed with your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, and members of the committee who are here that are interested in this project. This project is a project which is a partnership between the city and the private sector. This phase of the project started in 2006, and the idea of constructing a public partnership on the site that is on St. Joe and Fifth or Sixth Street started in 1980 to develop that empty lot into a multi-use or a parking The location of this project is in the downtown. As you're aware, the downtown is zoned into a downtown central business district. Parking is not required for any building that is constructed within the downtown business district. So people park either on the street or within parking facilities that are constructed by the City of Rapid City. This is the parking ramp that is currently used by the public and is built by the City of Rapid City for such use. The parking lot that is in question is located at the intersection of Sixth and St. Joe and Fifth Street on the east side. As highlighted in pink, it has been like that since 1977 without any structures on it, producing zero real estate taxes for the city. In 2006, the city has put out an RFP, or Request for Proposals, in which it stated three goals. One is to provide additional parking. The other one was to provide additional commercial activities and attract residential into the downtown area. Several firms have responded through two selections. We were selected, and this was our project plan. 575 parking spots. 280 of it were public use, which is, you know, a net gain of 140, and 52,000 square feet of commercial use and 50 to 70 condominiums. Unfortunately, we worked for two years with the city, and we could not achieve the goal of even getting a developer's agreement in place. And we could not proceed with the project, even though we spent a lot of money developing plans, doing an environmental assessment, doing a lot of other studies that were needed for the development of the site. So the city put it out for RFPs again, and the St. Joe Investment Group was selected, and their project included as such. And incidentally, their project, in August 19th of 2010, they came before you, in which they eliminated the 40 residential units, and they also stated that they may reduce the commercial to 40,000 square feet because of the fact that they lost their main tenant for that project. We were asked to get involved in the project and to help them out and to help the community. We believe in the community and we believe in the project. We got back into the project, and this is our current project plan. It is not different than any of the first two. It is to meet the goals, the scope that was set forth in the RFPs that the city put out. The project plan has 575 to 600 parking spots, and it has commercial use, including a convention center to attract people to the downtown, which will be the most impacting use on the downtown. We believe that from the experiences that we had, attracting conventions to our downtown area, we have not been successful in doing so because of the lack of the convention space. Some of you may ask, what is the size of that convention space? The goal of that convention space is not to compete with existing convention space that is located in the downtown. We have studied what is available with the Alex Johnson next door to this project. Their capabilities are up to 175, and if they squeeze them in and make it tidy, they will have up to 200 people. Our goal is to have between 200 to 600 people in the downtown. That will help us attract mid-sized conventions into our downtown and to our community. The market cannot sustain 70 condos, so therefore, 30 condos are proposed under this proposal. This is not, by the way, a proposal. This is just a project plan, which is to do the highest impact on the downtown and be consistent with the goals that were set forth before in the project's scope. A tax increment district was created and was approved on May 7, 2007, to allocate costs for various items that are needed in the downtown. One of those items is the parking, $49.2 million. $247,000 were to get rid of the fuel tanks and the contaminated soil on the site. There is a power line in the alley that needed to be buried, which is consistent with the plan, that 2020 plan that is set forth for the city, as stated previously. The total capital improvement cost is around $11 million. By the time you add the financing and the capital improvements, the total cost for the TIF is $23 million. That TIF was created for the construction of the parking structure, which is public improvements, soil removal, which is public improvement, and bury all of the power lines, which is consistent with the goals and the scope that is set forth by other experts and professionals to assist our community to have enhancement of lifestyle and help it This TIF was approved and was adopted by the City Council. The actions before you, I mean, the items before you later on are not to touch this TIF basically in any manner. It's not to be, we're not requesting an adjustment with the TIF or request any reallocation within the items of the TIF, which is typical of any TIFs that has been created by the This is the power line that the TIF was to bury. These are some of the fuel tanks that have been dug up from the site, and there are still more to be removed and more soil to be removed from that site. This is what can be built on that site. This building will contain multi-use facility that will contain the items that we have listed before. The parking will be surrounded or skirted with structure, so you could not tell that it is parking, but the alley will show the public parking and the parking facilities to allow for the air to move through the facility. There will be proper signs to direct the public that there is a public parking facility within the structure. The structure, as is shown here, has gone through the first step of the historical approval, and we will run it still again with the historic preservation for and we will run it still again with the historic preservation folks to get their input, and hopefully they will be satisfied with it again. It has not gone through the state commission because it requested a case study, and such study costs a lot of money in the ton between a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. At the stage we got to that stage, we have already spent over three hundred thousand dollars without any legal documents or legal agreements with the city. So we did not proceed because we did not lose another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the three hundred thousand dollars that we already spent. This is another view from Sixth Street of the project. I mean, pedestrian walking, hopefully will create a lot more activities. This is the parking. This is the subterranean level of the parking. There is only one level of subterranean. This is the street level, which will have commercial up front, a residential lobby, and then commerce, I mean, office commercial on the Fifth Street with the high exposure area. Project has multi-levels. We're not going to bore you with the details of the project. This is the residential tower of the project. This is the current lot that the city has. As I mentioned before, it's been locked down since nineteen seventy-seven. It generates zero real estate taxes. This is the parking ramp that the city has built. The city started this ramp in nineteen ninety-seven, I believe, and they just finished the third floor addition just recently. The total replacement cost for this ramp is little over nine million dollars. All the costs of this TIF, all of this parking ramp have been paid for by every taxpayer, including each one of you and each one of the audience who live within the sale limits. Okay? And as I mentioned before, this parking ramp is for the public use. People could lease parking there from any business within the downtown as long as the space is available. This is the tap of structure. It is suitable for such use. As you notice, there are some joints that require maintenance. There are some lidges which allow pigeons and, you know, and mice to live there. This type of construction is not suitable for commercial or residential uses. So therefore ours will be what they call post tension, which will not have any of the joints, will not have the lidges, to eliminate some of these things. There is nothing wrong with this facility. It is very suitable, and it is the best we can buy with our money as a community for this type of use. It is a great facility. Again, this structure will have, the quality of the construction within it will little bit, will surpass what has been used in the parking ramp. Construction costs for the projects are forty-one million, approximately to forty-eight million dollars. Typical project like this, approximately fifty percent of it is related to labor, which is approximately twenty and a half million dollars. If you assume fifty million, fifty thousand dollar a year construction job, you will generate about four hundred and ten jobs for a whole year. This project is going to take a lot more, is going to take about a year and a half to construct. So therefore, there will be approximately two hundred and eighty jobs for construction of this project for a period of about a year and a half, at an average of about fifty thousand dollar a job. I'm sure Detroit would kill to have a project like this. As far as sales tax, the material for this project, as I stated before, is approximately fifty percent of the cost. The material will be bought in Rapid City. The lean's quarry, the house materials ready mixed plant will be the main suppliers for some of the major material. Dakota Steel will be providing, most likely, the steel for this building. That sales tax is near about one and a quarter million dollars just in sales tax. Okay? I'm sure we all would love to see that such an increase in sales tax. The project will have people occupying the street. We already have some tenants lined up to take majority of the structure already. Two hundred and sixty jobs will be housed in the offices. Some of you are going to ask, are these people relocating within the downtown? Some of you are going to ask if these are new jobs. And when I tell you the majority of those jobs do not exist currently in downtown. Total jobs are about three hundred and thirty jobs. Total assessed value of the project is going to be near forty million dollars. It's going to create eight hundred thousand dollars a year in real estate taxes versus the zero real estate taxes that were created with that lot over the last thirty-four years. Every partnership has contributions. The city's investment in this is two point eight million dollars of twenty-twelve dollars. We already discussed what the parking ramp cost, near nine million dollars. This is about one and a half time the size as far as parking provided. Okay? The land that the city's parking ramp is on is the same exact size as this size. So if you add to the parking ramp the cost of the land, that parking ramp that the city owns has costed a little over ten million dollars. The city's investment in this parking, which is about six hundred parking spaces, is only about three point nine million dollars if you want to compare it to the ten point one million dollars estimated for the existing parking ramp. Our investment in this is thirty-seven to forty-four million dollars. The city has partnered with our community to build nice facilities to attract people to the downtown. Those facilities cost money to build, and they are going to hopefully help the downtown grow. This is the cost for the Main Street Square. Four point one million dollars to date, with a change order going before you today for twelve thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. Three point five million dollars was from twenty-twelve dollars. Okay? It's going to generate zero taxes to the community, but it's going to attract hopefully a lot of people into the downtown. This is the parking ramp, the third level. This is the cost of adding the third level. This cost does not include the footings that were constructed as part of the first phase of this ramp. The parking structures that exist in the downtown, it is what they call Historic District. Before I get to that, I want to tell you, we're taking that lot that generates zero taxes, and we're saying, folks, we want to freeze those taxes for the next fifteen years at zero. And we want to utilize those taxes to build six hundred parking spots that the city is responsible for building. And to generate the taxes to pay for that, we're going to build you a building that will be valued at forty million dollars, large enough to generate enough taxes to pay for the cost of the parking ramp. It's not my responsibility or my partner Pat Hall to build the parking ramp, but this is a partnership. We're getting the land, we're building you a parking lot, you're paying for cost for part of it. Freezing the taxes within the downtown is not, this is not just the first time it's done. The downtown, or major part of the downtown, exists within what they call Historic District. Okay? Which is highlighted before you. In the Historic District, the taxes can be frozen for eight years on any structure that is doing improvements, and any increase in its value is frozen at the taxes that were, that it was assessed prior to the improvements. That increase in taxes is going back for the private owner of that structure to pay for the improvements of such a structure. In our case, the increase in taxes is going towards building public infrastructure, public parking lot, burying the power line, removing the contaminated soil from a city parking lot. There are a lot of historic buildings in downtown, and we've got to respect them. Some of them have utilized the tax break that arises from the Historic District. Okay? Some of them did not. Okay? This is a building that I happen to own. We moved close to seventy to a hundred jobs within that building. Okay? We paved the parking lot. We're not required to provide a parking lot, but we did, because we need to work together to ensure that our community is not hurt just by adding more traffic or more users downtown. We could build on that parking lot a building without providing any parking lot today, but we choose not to do it, not because we're charging our tenants enough money to really even pay for the parking lot. It's thirty dollars a month. Tell you what, that parking lot, if the city's parking lot is assessed at one point one million dollars, this is approximately half of that lot, that parking lot is. And I tell you what, thirty dollars a month for sixty parking stalls, eighteen hundred dollars a month. Five hundred thousand dollars of value cannot be serviced with eighteen hundred dollars a month. All of you know finance, and all of you own homes, and most of you have mortgages. This is another building that we moved, we just finished remodeling without any incentive, any tax break, or without any public funding. We have moved eighteen jobs into that building, and it's, by the way, it's a hundred percent full. Both buildings are a hundred percent full. Okay? We have an agreement in place with you folks, and we intend to move forward as per the terms of the agreement. Every one of you has read those agreements. It states that this basically can be transferred. There were questions raised about the transfer of ownership from the St. Joe Group. They had a hard time during this economy to obtain financing. You know, you can't blame them. It's tough times out there. You've got to work ten times as much to get one single tenant, and we do work probably twenty times as much to get tenants currently under this scenario. Okay? The agreement was assigned to us about four months ago, and we hit the ground running. We worked with architects, we worked with tenants, and we worked with banks, and we are about to break ground, and I hope we could work together to finish the journey. The agreement also says that it is for the benefit of the city and the benefit of the partner of the city in this agreement, and not for the benefit of a third party. The agreement also says that it can be modified with agreements with both parties. We're before you to amend the master development agreement. We have not had a TIF agreement yet on this project. The master developer agreement has been amended before. The amendment that we're requesting before you today is only to allow us to utilize the already approved TIF for the same project plan that was adopted in two thousand and seven. And incidentally, we're using the same cost estimates of two thousand and seven, and we're taking a very huge risk in doing so, and we're still accepting such risk. I want to thank you for your time, and I will be available for any questions you may have or the audience may have. Thank you very much.
And we'll go to our speaker request forms, and we'll first recognize Nick Kennison, item thirty-seven.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. I will start off by saying that I do support lifting the current TIF cap and restoring the full TIF amount for this project. However, the jury is still out in my mind on this project. Not enough details are out about this project. As we just heard, we've got a lot of details there, but not enough time to really digest it. But, you know, I just have a couple of questions that just need to be considered before moving forward, I think. Does this building project take away or add to the quality of life here in Rapid? I wholeheartedly think that Mr. Hanny has the right intentions here for the city of Rapid City and moving us forward, and I think that whatever he would decide to do wouldn't actually affect adversely the quality of life here. Does this building aesthetically fit the character of Rapid City? It's a little bit modern. Is that really the direction that we want to go? Have we considered all emergency management consideration? There is some talk out there about fire concern, fire concerns for fire safety for the top stories of the building, as well as some other issues. Have we considered all the environmental effects of the construction itself, as well as the finished project? How will the project actually affect the environment after it's done? And have we considered the economic impacts of this project? Looking at the factors and all the figures that Mr. Shaffey just presented, I feel very comfortable with the economic impact that this would have in our community. And considering that we are on a limited time schedule for this project, I think the right move right now would be to lift the cap, and as time progresses here in the next coming months, we can answer some of these questions through further discussion with the community and further opportunities to put out the information. So that is kind of where I stand. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll recognize Peter Wernicki. Mr. Wernicki.
Peter Wernicki, Ward five. I want to thank the mayor for moving that presentation up to before the public comment because that's one of the things that I was going to attempt to point out, was here, while you would all have time to think about some of the things that Mr. Shaffey brought up, the public wouldn't have had that. Well, I thank you for doing that because there was quite a bit of information in there. My main concern with this is two things I noticed. Number one, there's a lot of confusion, and I think some of it is actually being generated by the fact that this project has gone on for so long. I mean, I'm trying to make heads or tails of the story that was printed just after the Legal and Finance Committee. All of a sudden, this thing's ballooned up to supposedly twenty, almost twenty-three million dollars, when that's really not the truth. The truth is, if you go back through the timeline, it always was there to begin with. It was just that there was a portion of it that was set aside for the parking ramp versus the rest of the, I think it was the five million for the actual project itself, which didn't include the parking ramp. But what caught my attention this evening was the remedial cost of two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. My guess is, I've been in the oil business for thirty-eight years, and we've done a lot of work remediation of sites. If that is true, that what is under there has been there for that long, it's going to cost a heck of a lot more than two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars to fix that property. Now, if I understand that correctly from tonight, that's what part of this TIF is being used for, is the remediation. Okay? I think somebody better go back and take a really good look at that number. There is always the unknown of dealing with anything that's underground, especially for that period of time. And you're talking periods since nineteen seventy-seven? All right? It's going to be a lot more cost to that. Thank you.
And we'll recognize Bill Freitag. Mr. Freitag?
Thank you, council and mayor. Bill Freitag, thirty-eight, twenty-one, Brook Street. You pretty much all know my position on this. I'm, I believe in growth. I believe in the benefits of growth. I believe that growth benefits the public, probably on a ninety-five to five split between what the developer or the investor would get and what the public gets. In our, in our economy, what I'm reminded of, you've got all this talk about the rich and the poor, and we've got to have a fight between the rich and the poor. You've got a thirteen to fifteen trillion dollar per year economy in this country, but can anybody tell me, name me one trillionaire individual? You can't. You can't name me one. You can't name me one five-hundred-billionaire individual. You finally get to Warren Buffett and Bill Gates, and you're down around forty or fifty billion dollars. So if you say thirteen trillion is the equivalent of thirteen thousand, then the richest guys got forty or fifty bucks. So let's take all the money they have, and this is old news now, and try to solve all our problems. That isn't going to do it. These are the guys that make things happen. Hanny's making something happen here, and I want to see it happen in Rapid City. And I'm pro-growth, and I have to ask myself, is there anything that I wouldn't support for growth? And there is. It's anything where the public does, if you put everything in the scale, and the scale doesn't tilt toward the public, I'm not in favor of it. But this project, obviously, the scale tilts so heavily toward the public that it's, I don't know, it's kind of ridiculous that we argue and fight over such a good thing for our town, because somebody might think somebody's going to get a dollar out of the public trough here. And it's just not true. The public is the one that's going to get the multi-million dollars that are being spent here. They're spent in our economy, and they're spent with the public. So my intent is to, after Hanny's gets this going, I'm going to do everything I can to help him get it leased up and rent it up, and I would hope you would do the same thing. And together, if we work together, this ambitious of a project can be a jewel for our town and can be a success. And if, you know, we're going to have the 5% who are going to fight it and would rather see it fail than it succeed. But I'm going to be in the 95%, and I know most of you are also, that wants this to succeed. So I thank you for your time, and I encourage you to continue to support this project.
Thank you. And we'll recognize Bonnie Redden. Bonnie?
I'm Bonnie Redden. I live in Ward four. I have watched in utter horror the last few years with all the TIFs that have come into and been put on the backs of the property owners in this town. And I am so badly against this one, and I know you don't want to hear a whole lot about it, so I will be getting in contact with each and every one of you personally and telling you in full. This is some of my really concerns about this. Have any of you seen any contracts on any of these proposed pipe dreams? The people that are going to be in these little storefronts? We have fifteen hundred vacant storefronts in Rapid City as of today. Fifteen hundred vacant storefronts. We need new storefronts like we need a whole man. Then, TIFs are to revamp blighted areas. The only blight we've ever had in this town was taken care of with a TIF that I was in favor of, by the way, which I thought was quite strange for me, for the, yes, and the burned-out packing plant. That was used the way they are supposed to be used, and I was totally in favor of that. This other stuff, this is not TIF-worthy. The underground over there, when I moved here, that was a great big standard station. I have no idea how many tanks are under there, and I have no idea where the plume has gone from all the contamination. It's been tore down for many, many years. And when they start digging into that, something else they're going to find that's one of the old creek beds. You go down about, oh, I don't know, twenty-eight feet, you're going to find a flowing creek bed under there. What are you going to do about that? You're going to put pilings down that are like eighty and a hundred-foot-deep just to stabilize a building of that size. Then I called Black Hills Power. I thought the guy was going to do damage to himself when I told him that they wanted to bury the line. This is pretty much a quote. "This is a major east-west trunk line for Rapid City. It will neither be moved nor buried." Period. End of discussion. We have $500 million in TIF debt, riding on the backs of 29,000 people in this town that own homes. And we are not happy. And I go out every day, and I talk to these people. They are afraid of you guys. I don't know why, but they are. And if this was a viable plan, some developer would have come up with it and borne the cost and not had his hand out coming to the people of Rapid City. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll recognize Tom Katus. Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilman. The last time I addressed this particular body, there's some new faces now, was in my opposition to Walmart. So I'm not exactly a pro-developer come hell or high water. In fact, I opposed the first two Walmarts and met privately with some of their top officials at a legislative council in Boston when they were considering the second. I said, "You guys are nuts. You just went through the wringer with a bad location and had to back off. Now you're going with a less than credible developer and another bad location." Well, finally, on round three, they got it right in the right position. But I'm here to speak for lifting the cap on this. This is a wonderful project for downtown Rapid City. We've seen what the square's done already. Ray Hiltonbrand came by the other day as a bunch of us were being televised, and I thanked him for developing a free-speech square. I'm not sure that that's exactly what he had in mind. But it's a wonderful asset, and this particular property is only a block away from it. I am a member of the board, vice president of Dakota Territory International Visitor Program. We just hosted the Midwest Conference in the Alex Johnson, at the insistence of the National Council of International Visitors. Our own recommendation was to do it at the Hilton, because we didn't think there was going to be enough space. Well, we were right. The conference was evaluated higher than any they've ever had in their history, except for the facility. They loved the ambience of the Alex, but there just wasn't enough conference space. Well, I think the Alex will be packed full once Hanny and Pat get their new construction up. The other thing is, we're dealing with two, in my judgment, really decent public citizens. I first met Pat about thirty-some years ago, when we put together an investment group to support Pat Jefferson in his hopes to become a professional boxer. He had missed the Olympics because of the boycott, the Jimmy Carter boycott. But his folks came to us, and they said, "Can you make sure that Pat gets his degree at Black Hills? And can you, local investors, stay behind him?" We did. Don King even offered to make him a stable boy. But Pat was there early. Pat was here with the Thrillers. I still remember him, you know, sweeping the court at halftime. And look at Hanny, what a wonderful person, coming into this country illegally, getting a couple of... You know, the Tea Party may not support you these days, Hanny, but getting his legal documents later, and getting a degree at mines, and then a master's at mines, working for you guys, the city itself, for eight years as a city engineer, running a wonderful restaurant. These are two wonderful public citizens. They're not people from outside. They're not the giant Walmarts of the world. This is the right project at the right time, and I urge you to support this fully. Thank you.
We'll recognize Steve McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council people. I'm here to oppose this lifting of this TIF. A little bit about me, since I don't know everybody who's new on the council. I've been involved in downtown buildings since 1982, when I built the, excuse me, when I bought the Elks Building and remodeled it. I've also owned the Firehouse Restaurant, Sixth Street Bakery, the Mets Bakery, the Knights of Columbus Building, and I've done projects in all of those. And I think I've invested personally over $20 million in downtown Rapid City. I've done that without a subsidy. And I think that's the way development needs to be done. When this original advertisement came out, Mayor Shaw said, "We need two more things downtown. We need more parking, and we need residential facilities for our people." It was a big project, maybe a little bigger than I wanted to do, but Ray Hiltonbrand came to me five years ago, almost to the day, and said, "Steve, we should do this project, because downtown needs the housing, and downtown needs the parking." We submitted a bid, along with Hanny. Our bid was at the other end of Hanny's. We were going to build 300 parking stall garage, 40 residential units, and some retail for under $10 million without any government subsidy. Our project wasn't picked, Hanny's was. That was five years ago. I haven't commented since that day about that project, but I think it's time now to bring it up. I just feel that if this project is going to see the light of day, it needs to see it from the private side. This subsidy is way beyond what should be supported. I can understand the city supporting it somewhat, but at this level, it's just beyond what it requires. If this project, if the project that Ray and I envisioned was done today, I guarantee you it can be done for less than $25 million, and it'll satisfy the needs of what downtown needs. I'm talking about someone who's been thirty years involved in building down here. I think you really need to reconsider this. It's just not the way to finance this. In my own particular case, I bought the Knights of Columbus Building on Fifth and Columbus three years ago. I put a million dollars into that building. My taxes have gone up $20,000, and those taxes are going to support my competition on St. Joe and Sixth. I had asked those of you in business, specifically Dave, maybe, and Gary, how would you feel about taking some of the taxes you pay and paying, for your case, Dave, go down to Gary Larson at Western Dakota Insure, and give him some of that so he can develop his business? It's just not the way America works. Private enterprise is what makes this country run, not government subsidies. Gary, this hotel is going to be supported by the taxes from my building, and it shouldn't be, or it shouldn't be supported from the taxes from your building up on Mount Rushmore Road. The time for TIFs has come and gone. Let's have a private developer do something, support him at a minimum, and put an end to this.
Mr. McCarthy, please wrap up.
Thank you.
We recognize Ben Snow. Mr. Snow?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity to weigh in on this project. As a relative newcomer to town, being here less than two years, and having formed some opinions of this community, and learning a little bit about opportunities that come before, not just this body, but come before the community at large, I come to bringing a perspective that's a little bit more regional, so I'd like for you to just consider. The hat I'm wearing is not really specific to downtown, although I'm going to enter into the record a letter that I've written that hopefully you'll consider as you deliberate on this project. The applicant has already done, I think, a great job in highlighting the impact of jobs during construction and on an ongoing basis with a project of this magnitude and this scale. And there is an impressive scope and impact associated with a project like this. And projects like this, as being proposed, do not just happen in a vacuum, and they don't come along very often. So let's all keep that in mind as we form opinions about this. But projects like this happen when the community is willing to step up to the plate and partner with a developer that has the wherewithal, the wherewithal to produce something that's this ambitious. So I think we need to recognize that. Now, if you'll allow me, I'll read into the record my letter in support of President's Plaza mixed-use development. Honorable Mayor and members of City Council, I'm writing this letter in support of the above-referenced project, particularly in the context of creating higher and better land uses in the development of downtown Rapid City. Having a high-quality and economically vibrant environment in downtown Rapid City is vital to our region's long-term economic health. As more people flee larger cities in favor of smaller ones, Rapid City needs to be prepared to compete for the best and brightest individuals and businesses. And one simple way we can do this is by leveraging efforts of the private sector whenever possible to create more attractive and valuable mixed-use projects while meeting the basic downtown parking needs. I agree with the findings of the legal and finance committee last week that any efforts to further delay this project would be tantamount to killing it. This would be an unacceptable outcome, especially when we consider all of the time, effort, and patience invested by the city to date to achieve a mixed-use project, one which will create elements of retail, office, and nighttime residence, and parking, all on the same site. This is exactly what is meant by highest and best use. Opportunities to create projects of this scale do not come along very often, and given the time constraints in getting the public improvements under contract by May of next year, the city should simply amend the master development agreement to reflect the public improvements needed and continue its good-faith working relationship with the current development team. Many business decision-makers look at a region's downtown environment and consequent level of development as a litmus test and precursor to making the critical decision to maintain, expand, or relocate their operations. Therefore, Rapid City's future will depend on its ability to successfully compete as a legitimate business center, which includes having a highly-evolved and attractive downtown with projects of the caliber of President's Plaza. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration on this proposal.
Thank you. We'll recognize Mike Derby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Mike Derby, 2735 Country Club Drive, Rapid City. And I'm also a commercial real estate broker with Caldwell Banker, but I have no interest in this project from a personal standpoint, other than I did spend a year and a half with the pre-leasing for the St. Joe Investment Group. And so I'm intimately aware of this project and how it's gotten to this point. And I do want to let you know, I'm not surprised that Hanny mentioned there's been a great deal of interest in locating there. There was a great deal of interest when I was pre-leasing this project. Unfortunately, we all know how the economy is and the tight economic condition and financing that prevailed over the last three years. So I'm excited to see this project go forward. I understand tax increment financing. I understand tax increment districts, and this project would not happen without those ability to utilize those sources. You understand how tax increment district works. So I'm going to let Hanny defend the districts, but I do just want to share a little insight in what I tell my clients these days. Number one, a bird in the hand is worth two in the bush, okay? You've got a developer here that's ready to move. That's worth a lot. Number two, sometimes the first offer, I tell my clients, the first offer is the best offer. So keep that in mind. Time is money. And the third thing is, if you currently are in the commercial world and you have tenants, do whatever it takes to keep that tenant in your building, because I can tell you, there's not another one lined up behind them. It might be a year. It might be two years. So you might have to take a little haircut to keep somebody there. But that's the way the real world is in commercial real estate. So my hat's off to Pat Hall and Hanny Shaffey, and I hope you can support them in this project, and thank you very much.
And we'll recognize Jim Didier. Mr. Didier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, honorable council members. My name's Jim Didier. I'm at 2421 Chance Relayed. No one agrees, I guess, more wholeheartedly with endorsement of this project than myself and my partner, Rod Slimbin. We have worked on... We have worked on it for many years, and I have been involved in other projects which have been promoting the city of Rapid City for tourism conventions and bringing an increased awareness to not only this area, but downtown. There is a great need for development of this nature, and it needs to happen. As to why it hasn't happened, the reasons, the reasons have been many. I think it's, it's, it's a complex project. We need to look at the complexity of the financing of where it's been. I don't think anybody would argue that Pat Hall and Hanny Shaffey are very successful developers. They would be one of the most successful development teams, I think, that could bring this project to fruition. However, one of the things we need to look at is the process by which we are, we have arrived at tonight, and that is a process that I believe might entail some further study. It might entail a new RFP. It might entail a new bid letting, so to speak, simply to maintain the legal ramifications. I'm not an attorney. I assume that our city attorney has had an awareness to look into this, but I would certainly hate to proceed along a line that would be considered inappropriate at the least, or illegal at the greatest, at the expense of jeopardizing any development of this nature. I have, as I said before, been involved in a, in a previous bid on this project before in 2006, and it, it is agreeably, it needs to be done. As to whether or not we need to push full steam ahead right now at this point, whether or not further study needs to be done, whether or not we need to do another RFP with taking into accounts the new costs, new cost for construction, and I, I guess, right now, there, there's some questions to the environmental assessment costs that need to be done. I think we need to examine these and see if this is the best case to move forward. But again, I wholeheartedly support the development of such a structure, of such a project, of a public-private development. That needs to be done. But I think we need to look at this as to see if whether or not we are within our rights to move forward as we have it presented tonight. Thank you.
We'll recognize Stanford Adelstein.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I rise to recommend that you reject the signing of a contract for construction this evening. It's bad government. First of all, you are changing from an agreement of the 21st of September of $5 million to nearly $22 million, and there's no visible reason why. And in fact, my son, because we're developers, worked closely with Brian Vulcan, trying to work this out. There was no conceivable chance that we would return to the $21 million, and it's just not fair for in one meeting last week to all of a sudden change that much money to one group of developers. The next thing that, of course, is significant to me in terms of it being bad government, I do not believe that it is appropriate to have a subsidy to compete with a non-subsidy. I see no reason for the need for another hotel in downtown Rapid City, and am shocked that you are considering that, at least in the broad framework that you've seen a picture. You haven't seen floor plans, you haven't seen a licensee, you haven't seen a name. It just is going to be another hotel. I then go to another step, which is, of course, comes from my night job, or my weekend job, or I get to go to Pier in January and February. This TIF, if you sign an agreement tonight, I hope that you add an addendum that holds the city harmless, holds the city harmless from having a contract which you will not be able to fulfill. Let me mention something. First of all, there is a specific, there is a specific prohibition of using TIF for housing. The next thing that is really very significant to me in, now in the law, is that you have none, as far as I know. I've seen no detailed description of the methods of financing that they, that these gentlemen are plenty to use. You need to have a fiscal impact statement which shows the tax district, and the one that you have is five years old. You need to have a detailed, detailed description of the costs, round figures of 19 million and 6 million. I was a contractor most of my life. That doesn't meet the law. But the most dangerous thing that you're doing is entering into a contract now where you will agree to pay a payer out of TIF funds when that TIF may not, no expenditure may be provided, this is in 1119-3, we passed in Senate Bill 90 this year, no expenditure may be provided in the plans for more than five years after the district is created, unless an amendment which has to do with higher costs. So you will not be able to pay for the housing, you will not be able to pay anything after the time is up in May. And there's no way it's going to be built by that time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask for more time, but sometimes it's not possible.
Thank you. And we'll recognize Ed Randazzo.
I rise in opposition to the lifting of the cap at this time, and I have many of the same questions that have already been asked, so I won't re-ask them. However, I have three ongoing concerns. Number one is the whole public-private partnership involved here. I agree with some of the statements already been made that this project should stand on its own or not stand at all, and I think we should take another look at that, and a closer look. And number two is that Mr. Shaffey, in his presentation tonight, mentioned a couple of studies that were not undertaken due to the costs involved. And I believe one of them is probably involved with hydrology, as it has been mentioned to me by several people recently, that there's probably creek bed underneath there, and that's going to become a problem as we get into this thing. And I think that if we do this at first, we'll know what we're dealing with at that point. It doesn't mean to say that it is there. I don't know it to be there either, but it is a possibility that it is there. The third concern I have is the presumption on the part of this council that the city of Rapid City, the citizens of the city of Rapid City are, have ongoing support for this project. I think that the rushing into this is a problem. I think that, at the very least, the council should allow some time for more public input on this project, seeing as it's been a great amount of time between the inception of it and today. So I urge you to just start, I think the best course of, would be to just do a new RFP and take it from the top down, and let's see what it is in 2011 and see where the support is, or at the very least, to give more time to the citizens to give some input to this project. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll recognize Don Frankifeld.
Got a little boost from Mr. Hall there to get up there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the committee. I got into kind of an argument with Mr. Davis last time, and I thought perhaps if I used written remarks, I'd be a little stricter, stay a little closer to my, to my script. However, I, I know that Mr. Katus has said that, that Mr. Hall and Mr. Shaffey are fine fellows, notwithstanding the recently discovered criminal records here. I concur with that. Does it follow from that that they ought to be given $23 million of taxpayer money? Mr. Snow says that this is a fine project, and I agree with that. And I wonder why that justifies handing, handing them a check for $23 million. The issue is not whether they're good people, it's not whether it's a good project. The question is whether we're appropriate in giving people a huge subsidy to compete against other people who are going to be in retail and commercial and residential housing. I think the answer, excuse me, is clearly no. I said I had written remarks, but I can count, having once been in the legislature, and I think I know where this is going. So I'll summarize very quickly. I think Mayor Shaw's vision for this project was a good one. Next-use development, parking, residential, commercial, and retail, in that order. Residential has sort of fallen to the back these days. Whatever we build there is going to be there for a long, long time. It's more important that we do it right than that we do it quickly. If you vote against tonight's proposal, you'll have a chance to reopen the process with a competitive RFP. You have plenty of time to do it right. The difference between a legal execution and a lynching is a matter of due process. While it is important to do the right thing, it is equally important that it be done in the right way. I'm sure the proponents of this $23 million public expenditure believe they are doing the right thing. We in the public really don't know because we don't have enough information to judge. But clearly, a huge grant to a single applicant without considering alternatives is not doing things in the right way. Make no mistake, tonight's vote represents a sharp departure from what has been agreed to before. The amount is different, the development, excuse me, the developers are different, the project is different. This is Rapid City's own troubled asset relief program, TARP. It's the largest taxpayer bailout of a private developer in Rapid City's history. It's not the developer's fault. Blame rests with the potentially reckless city council. I see I'm running out of time, so I'll skip some of what I was going to say. I think maybe Mr. Shaffey's proposal is the best one. If so, it will withstand the scrutiny of a competitive RFP. I also remind the council that this issue, in my judgment, not yet proven, is referable. I don't think it's wise to refer everything. I certainly think it's wise to refer issues in which the city council ignores the public interest and rushes to judgment. I hope a referendum does not require any further conversation, but it's out there as a possibility, and I'm certainly willing to support it if, if necessary.
Thank you. And we'll recognize Scott Sumner. This is the last speaker request form on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Scott Sumner. I'm Rapid City resident, but I'm here as an attorney on behalf of President's Plaza, Mr. Hall, and Mr. Shaffey. I want to first just point out to the council the long road that has already been traveled in connection with this project, and to point out the things that are not being asked, that were changes not being sought. First, the tax increment district is already established, and it is already in place. So we're not here, we should not be here to revisit that question. It's important that the council, having once made that decision, stick to that decision, in my opinion. Second, when the tax increment district was approved, the project plan was approved by the city council. And this proposal does not seek to in any way amend, modify, or reallocate any of the funds in the project plan for this tax increment district from that which was first established. So we're not trying to reinvent or revisit any of that. Tax increment district financing is, you know, as you all know, it's, it's constantly a subject of controversy, and it's easily misunderstood. But the simple fact is that the tax increment monies will be used only for those things for which tax increment monies are allowed. That's what the project plan calls for. That's what the master development plan calls for. The amendment to the master development plan that is sought reiterates and restates that fact, so that the tax increment money will be used only for the public improvements in this public-private combined project. It will not be used to pay for any of the private development costs. It will not be used in any way that's contrary to what the tax increment financing law allows. Second thing has already been decided in this project is the selection of the developer. This council had, when they approved the assignment of this project to President's Plaza LLC, has already selected the developer. That project is, therefore, that, that choice has already been made, and it is not something that should, we should go back to revisit. The, one very important thing that has not changed is that the scope of the project, realistically, is substantially the same as the scope of the project that has got us here today. We're not looking to change the scope of the project, and principally, as it relates to public improvements and the need for parking in downtown Rapid City, the proposed amendment to the master development plan does not change the provision for parking to be made available to the public into the city of Rapid City under the master development plan. All we seek at this time is to bring the master development plan in line with the financing initially laid out in the tax, when the tax increment district itself was created, and to bring those two agreements into line with one another so that this project that has been studied and supported can move forward. Thank you very much.
Would you not have any additional speaker request forms on items one through six, or one through 71? Did I miss anyone? Okay. There'll be an opportunity, Mr. Shaffey, for questions from the, from the council members in just a moment. Do we have a motion to close public comment on items one through 71?
So moved.
We have a motion by Sasso and a second by Peterson to close public comment on items one through 71. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now on consent items one through 69. Would you like to remove? We'll recognize Ron Sasso. Ron?
Items 37. Item 37 and item 63, please.
Item 37 and 63. Jordan Mason. Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to remove item eight.
Charity Doyle. Charity?
Would it be prudent to remove item 36, or did we kind of, did we move that to general public? I mean, Hanny's presentation is what it was.
I don't think that's necessary.
Okay. The other item would be item number 62, please.
So far, we have eight, 37, 62, and 63. Any additional items to remove? Seeing none. Do we have a motion to approve the balance of consent with the exception of eight, 37, 62, and 63? Motion by Davis and a second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number eight. Alderman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Eight is accept green, sustainable cities, list the priorities, and change the wording on eight B by removing the word subsidies and replacing it with assistance. And I'll move to approve.
We have a motion by Brown and a second by Wright, and we'll go to Jordan Mason. Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree that there's some, many positive things in this, in this recommendation, but I just wanted to make sure that this was a recommendation, as in, in some of the aspects of this document, it, it sounds as if we're committing ourselves to something down the line right now that also has attached with it cost expenditures, and I just want to bring that to everyone else's attention. And I just want to bring that to everyone else's attention, that specifically, just to give an example here, but within the 2010 solid waste management plan, there's a lot of reference to certain purchases of large items. In addition, the other thing that I would like to just draw attention to is the featuring of local food and promotions, and also the comment about the transit access. And I just want to make sure that we aren't dedicating certain resources without analyzing whether or not that's going to be cost-effective. So I guess I would just yield the floor to my colleagues to maybe answer some of those questions. Thank you.
And we'll go to Jerry Wright. Jerry?
As for the solid waste issues, of course, nothing would be committed by this action, but would be by the action of the Public Works Department, request for activities for us to act on. But they were included in the rate study and the solid waste plan of 2010, and the rates were funding them, so it wouldn't be anything they couldn't do if they wanted to do it. And as for the transit access, and talking to Eric and the group, primarily is that if we do have a farmer's market, that we take a conscious effort to have transportation to that facility provided to the poor that need that, and if we can, of course. There's nothing binding on this as recommendations.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, the motion is for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 37. Alderman Mason?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 37 is to authorize mayor and finance officer to sign second addendum to the master development agreement with President's Plaza LLC with an amendment in Section 2, Obligations of St. Joe, Subparagraph H, from 15% to 25%. And I move to approve.
Motion by Mason to approve, second by Wright. Any discussion? Go to Bonnie Peterson.
I had a question of some things that were brought up, and I guess I would ask Senator Adelstein, could I ask him a question?
If he's willing to answer.
If you're willing to answer.
Go ahead with your question.
Okay. Can you tell me, summarize what your concerns are?
What my concerns are as a senator or as a citizen?
On this issue?
Well, it's sort of a difference.
What you prioritize, what you had said something earlier about needing in the contract, about holding harmless.
Oh, I see. That's what I, that's perfect. What concerns me would be that if you sign a contract, which I haven't seen, that would specify that you will pay out of the $23 million, because there's no other source, that you will pay certain amounts of dollars, $23 million, and as I read what we passed this last year, that in order to take any money out of that, out of that five-year-old, that you must take it out, you must have the work completed. No expenditure may be made after five years have elapsed since the date. So you have an interesting situation where if you agree today, and as far as I've been informed, and I may be wrong, there are no detailed plans, there are no subcontractors, there are no materials approved, there's not even a very specific design beside the beautiful picture. So there's no conceivable way that $23 million can be spent on something that isn't even finished in design by May. On top of that, there's a specific requirement in state law that you have detailed costs before you make a, before you have this contract, in that same section. And there are no detailed costs that I have seen, and that means, you know, how much electric will be, and the material. In other words, you need specific costs as a contractor, we're used to pages of them. So that if you sign this agreement, you should really require the developer to agree that if that contract may not be paid by the city, that you, they will hold you harmless and they will not make any claim against you.
Okay. And was there anything else you wanted to add, any other concern?
No, I used my three minutes, and I'm glad I was able to make that clear.
Okay.
The other points I've made, I think. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. I still have, I'm not sure what order to go on this. Mr. Shaffey? A gentleman earlier mentioned something about the creek bed and the hydrology. Has any studies been done on that?
I'm very familiar with that site. And as a matter of fact, we just finished putting an elevator shaft in my other building next door to this site, and we went to 42-foot-deep hole. And you've probably seen the alley and the city's parking lot flooded with water while we're putting the elevator shaft for about three weeks. There is a creek bed at the bottom of this. There are buildings in the area of the creek bed that we have some, other neighbors have some. I assure you, we put a man in the moon, and we're very, we have people live in space. And I'm sure putting a foundation for a building like this is very easy engineering-wise. We have the Alex Johnson Just Kitty Corner front of this site, and it's been there since 1920s, and I'm sure the technology today is far more advanced than when it was built.
Okay, so you're confident about that?
Yes, ma'am. We have studies, we have geotechnical engineers that have done studies, and we have their report, and we gave it to the city previously.
Okay. Thank you. And I guess I have a question for the attorney.
Can I take advantage of older woman Peterson's ask if I had one other thing to say?
Only if she asks it again.
Senator Adelstein, do you have anything else to say?
I guess I didn't, I didn't really give a positive step. I listed all the negatives. The positive thing would be that if you could, someone would offer a substitute motion to defer action on this issue until the next council meeting, so the questions that I raised legally and the risks that the city is taking could be better addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adelstein. May I ask the city attorney a question?
Just go over before.
Senator Adelstein brought up this issue, and I know that we had made, we had a discussion earlier today about the interpretation of the five-year rule. And so can you kind of speak to that so that?
I'd like to, first of all, read the exact language. It states that no expenditure may be provided for in the plan more than five years after a district is created unless an amendment is adopted by the governing body under 11923. There is no case law that has interpreted this, the statute. Municipalities are interpreting it differently. Our interpretation is that if the contract is let within this five-year period, that you would be in compliance with SDCL 11913. And also expenditures are, can be defined in certain circumstances as a payment or the promise of a future payment. And that is how, actually, I, our previous city attorneys and growth management came to this conclusion. We've discussed it with other communities. Certainly, there are people that are interpreting it to say that expenditures can be made after the five years. Some are saying, no, everything has to be completed with the five years. We feel like we've taken a reasonable approach, and that's our interpretation.
Senator Adelstein brought up about putting something in there that would hold us harmless if for some reason this would be?
I'm going to let Joel address that. He's been working with these agreements far more than I.
Cool. Thank you, Mayor. That has been a standard term of all our TIF agreements that we've done with private developers. We have always said that we aren't guaranteeing these, that it's dependent on what the increment is and if we're not allowed to pay the increment. So the risk would be, if Senator Adelstein were correct, and this went to court, and it was determined that you could not pay after five years, that would be on the developer then to make that up with their lender.
So, in other words, it could be really a good coup for the city?
Well, it depends on what happens with the lender. The lender might disagree with that, but ultimately, they're going to have to convince the lender that they're going to be entitled to payment under this. So this is just the first hurdle. But we do write-in language that protects the city so that if the increment is ever insufficient or legally fails, that we aren't on the hook for those funds.
Okay, and I just want to share, the developers, that I was just kidding about the coup part. I was just, I like to be a comedian every once in a while. Okay, I think probably my other comments I would make, I'm sure will probably be made by my fellow councilmen, so I'll yield the floor. Thank you.
And we'll go to Charity Doyle. Charity?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we have, I guess we're faced today with removing a $5 million cap that was put in place or an amendment to this master development agreement and restoring it so that it matches the original TID. And I'd like to take a moment to really clear the air, because between politics and misleading information in the paper, there's been a ton of unnecessary confusion generated around this topic, and it stirred up the TIF conversation like a beehive, if you will. I'm sure you as a taxpayer, and I know I as a taxpayer, am very grateful when someone takes the time to illuminate us and lay out the facts. Now regardless of how you may feel about TIFs in Rapid City, our predecessors entered into a legal agreement to allow this project in exchange for some needed and desired infrastructure. It befalls this council and this mayor to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money committed to this project, which is only infrastructure. We are not paying for residential area, we're not paying for commercial space. We are only paying for infrastructure. If we do this, we will maintain the city's integrity, which I think is very important, and will protect the city's interests in the execution of this contract. To do anything else, in my opinion, would be a violation of the oaths of office that we all took sitting up here on this dais. And I'd like to cover a few facts with you. Fact: this lot currently generates a loss for the city due to the fact that we accrue $0 in property taxes, and we still have to fund snow removal every year, which, as I understand it, more than eats up the parking permit revenue for this lot. I appreciate that some developers feel that they can do this project without a subsidy, but the fact is that we, the taxpayers, are taking $3.9 million, if you add in the 2.82012 funds, and the 1.1, if you want to add that in, of what this lot is estimated to be worth, for infrastructure that would cost us about $12 million. In return, we get our parking. And some people say, well, you could bond for it. Sure, we could bond for it. We could build this ramp on our own. But like today, it would still generate $0 in property tax revenue, and most likely incur another loss due to snow maintenance, snow removal, things like that, general maintenance. And we would still have to pay interest on that bond. There would be no return on our investment, in other words, besides having places to park cars downtown. Fact: if this property does not perform the way the developers are projecting, then they, not we, the taxpayer, are on the hook for that $11.7 million loan. It is not a $23 million TIF, it is an $11.7 million TIF. Fact: we have the opportunity to take nothing and turn it into a whole lot of something, and these opportunities, like Mr. Snow said, do not come around every day. This is a very rare opportunity, in my opinion. Fact: if we breach our current contract for this project and go out for new proposals, aside from the potential legal ramifications, we risk expiring this TID. Sure, we could create a new one, but we'll lose the increment that would go to pay off that loan. So when it was created, this TID had a valuation of $6.9 million. Because of improvements like Tuscany Square, the Knights of Columbus Building, Main Street Square, there are others, this TID today values at $14.7 million. If we start over, our base assessment would be the $14.7 million, and a project of this caliber would not be feasible. We'd be looking at another 30 years before we get our parking ramp. Okay? Now, is there a risk? Certainly, there is a risk. But the risk is on the developers. The only way the taxpayers come into play over and above that $3.9 million is if the project is successful. We'll temporarily forego our portion of the newly-generated property taxes to pay for the opportunity to create the opportunity, if that makes sense. You may need to mull that one over a couple times. But this, to me, and a lot of you, you've heard me speak out against TIFs because I'm a stickler for following the rules, but this one is following the rules. It's inner-city, it stimulates the economy, it's all for infrastructure. I mean, we're not bending it in this case, and I think, you know, the bad press that this has gotten really is unfortunate. We know, I know, and you know, that tax increment financing has been abused, and it's been overused in Rapid City. So to shed some light on the full scope of this issue, I've been doing research for the last probably three or four weeks on this, and I want to thank Mary Floto. She's not here today, but Assistant Finance Officer has helped me tremendously in digging this information up. Now, because of the time intensity involved, I only went back through 2004. So the numbers could be a little different, but I think it'll give you a general picture. I wanted to see what the impact was of TIF activity to the city's coffers, just the city's coffers. Now, I will tell you, I was fully, wholeheartedly expecting my research to show me a different picture. But here's how it shakes out. In our use of TIF financing, again, from 2004 through 2010, just the city's portion and just the increment are the numbers I'll be referring to, we brought in $9.7 million just on the increment. We also paid out $4.6 million over those six years on TIF loans. That leaves us with about $5.1 million that some people would say we would otherwise not have had. Now, I disagree with some of that. I think that some of the projects would have happened regardless, so even if half of them, even if half of the projects would have happened without the use of TIF financing, we'd still be sitting at $2.5 million that we earned on our taxpayer investment. If we stopped TIFs now, which consequently, they did stop pretty much in 2008, we will have added more than $3 million to the general fund every year through this activity. And like I said, this is not what I was expecting to find. I was looking for detriments to the budget. I was looking for, I was looking for the negative. So this really surprised me. For those of you that know how much I research, I mean, I'm willing to put it all out there. So with this opportunity, we have, I think, a responsibility in a trying economy to take a lot that generates a loss for the city, put it on the tax rolls, and have guaranteed revenue generation for the city that we could all use. This is money, not, I mean, not just the jobs, but think of what we can do for our CIP fund. There's infrastructure. Everybody's crying we need infrastructure, but we're not generating any more revenue. Here's that opportunity. And then there are the 2012 advocates who say, well, you know, there are special projects that we could do, but my project's not getting enough momentum behind it. Some of this sales tax revenue generated from this commercial development would go to fund that, too. There are so many benefits, and I think that we need to look at the ripple effect of what this opportunity, along with Main Street Square, I don't think it can be ignored. Or, in my opinion, we can violate the current contract and leave it a parking lot. You decide.
And we'll recognize Steve Laurenti. Steve?
I just wanted to speak a little bit about what we should do with this, and probably 74 as well, but I think, based on some of the speakers we've had this evening, with Mr. McCarthy and Mr. Adelstein, I would caution that we would move forward tonight with the impact that this is going to have, and the amounts of money that the taxpayers are going to spend in the 2012 funds alone. I'm not even going to touch the TIF, I'm talking about just the 2012 funds. But I would like to offer a substitute motion to establish a special city council meeting two weeks, could be a month from now, we can decide that. But I believe we need to slow down. But I believe we need to slow down, we need to look at this in detail, and we need to make sure that if we're going to move forward with this, that we are getting the best deal for the taxpayers. And so, I would like to offer a substitute motion to establish a special city council meeting to address all of the details that many of us do not know, including the citizens of Rapid City.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Alderman Laurenti, you still have the floor. And I would just ask that if anyone wants to offer a motion, then please offer the motion, and you can have the floor back after the motion is on the floor.
Okay, thank you. I think I'll yield at this point. Thank you.
Alderman Ron Sasso. Ron?
I would like to make a motion to revert the wording of Section 2H back to 15% variance instead of 25%.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Why don't you explain your motion, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. This project, which, you know, we've all heard, one of the things that has happened is the project has undergone some changes. And one of the things that actually, as, and I'm probably going to go a little bit longer than just explaining the motion, we heard this, we heard tonight, a lot of people saying, "Hey, let's look at an RFP, let's go back to this." My feeling is legally, we missed that boat back on April 18th when we went into a developer agreement, we have an agreement, that shifted over to the current developers, and at this juncture, we are working with developers, and I believe we would be at risk if we were to go to RFP. With that said, the project, even though in the general terms appears to be a good one, in my opinion, one concern that I think a lot of people have is that we've got a good project and the concern of it being trimmed down at some point. And if it gets trimmed down by 25%, would that be a significant change to the plan? I believe that would qualify and would and could trigger an RFP. So, that's why I would rather see that section remain at a 15% variance.
Alderman Sasso, we will come back to you if you'd like to offer that motion at a later time, and we'll go to Richie Nordstrom. Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you to all the speakers who had the courage to come forward and speak on this topic and bring their opinion forward to the council. If I may ask a question of Hanny Shaffey to clarify an issue about the high-line wire, the power grid that runs through that area. Can you help me understand that a little bit? There's some information that's been shared with us about it that cannot be put underground or that it will not be part of the, or should not be part of the infrastructure change. Could you share some light onto that subject?
Yes, sir. We have actually a preliminary discussion about four years ago with some of the staff at the power company to relocate or bury the power line in the alley, and there were no objections to doing so, and we were given the estimate of $300,000 to do that for that block. We're hoping that the numbers will still be within that scope, and we believe they are. We're taking the risk as far as, you know, burying them. If it comes in 350, we'll be responsible for it, just like any other developer's agreement. We're responsible for any amount that exceeds the TIF. We have contingencies within the TIF to address and foresee things like this if it is higher than that. By the way, none of the TIF is going for the private portion of the structure, it's going only for the items that are identified. Yep. I hope that addressed the question.
It does, it does, and thank you, Hanny. Most of the council members know that I'm not skilled in high finance, and so I like to break this down as simple as I can get it to where I understand how this thing really Let me just start off saying that to me, the best way I could analyze this is putting it into a marriage, putting this into, we're getting hitched as the city is the groom to the bride, is the developer. And right now, with the idea of that we are taking some specific risks on the parking lot, some specific risks on the soil contamination removal and anything else that they're finding underground. When we start monkeying with the hemline, that part of it really bothers me on the bride. If she changes the hemline on there, really what difference does it make? To a limit, of course. And that's where this item H has made that proposal come forward as 25%. If there's a change to the hemline of 25%, then they'll inform us. And I'm assuming that we, not assuming, but I know that we will get that information if there's some costs that are not expected. If they run into some other situations where they have not foreseen a cost encumbrance, I'm sure they'll notify us of that. In committee legal and finance, we were talking about eliminating this last couple of sentences off of this sub paragraph H off of that. But to alleviate some concerns, Alderman Doyle made the motion, and I can support the recommendation of for being at 25%. As far as I'm concerned is, once it starts gaining outside of the parking lot, all of those areas that we have, outside of the areas that we have direct concern or issues with, that's the developer's risk, and it should remain with the developer. So, that's why I like to use the, in my simple terms, understanding this whole thing is just like a wedding, and the bride is coming to the wedding with a certain hemline, and I'm very comfortable with where that hemline is at right now. Thank you, Mayor, I'll yield the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. These are definitely exciting times for Rapid City. You know, I thought it was interesting, just to recap real quick, that one of the first items that we brought up is the 2020 strategic plan, and goal number one was to attract business. I think we're doing that right here tonight. We're talking about making one of the largest structures in Rapid City that we've ever seen. I would fair wager probably one of the largest structures in the state. I think that's pretty exciting. Overall, I'm obviously in support of this project. I think it's been stipulated that, you know, and expressed that we are already in an agreement, we're moving forward on that agreement, and we're moving forward to start to break ground. So, I think this is the right direction. One of the things and concerns that have been brought up by some of the comments that I am taking notice of is that there has been some comment about protecting the citizens, and one thing I did want to ask about concerning the current agreement before we sealed the deal, so to speak, just to make sure, but I'd like to make sure that we've also included the stipulation, as was already kind of expressed during the September 6, 2011 meeting, dealing with the January 31 deadline for the proof of financing. And I just want to turn to our city attorney to make sure that that was included, and if not, would that be a problem of including that in with the second addendum?
We'll recognize our Assistant City Attorney, Joel Landine. Joel?
Thank you, Mayor. The January deadline that was discussed, I believe several months ago when the subcommittee that's been working with the developers was established, that they would bring back their proof of financing by January, wasn't really established what that was. We certainly could insert that into this agreement, it would not be difficult. I believe the language would just be that they provide proof of financing by the end of January. In the actual contract for private development related to the TIF, which is later on your agenda, we did put in specific financing, which would be all the details and specifics and interest rates, and there's a lot of information that they would need to submit. That actually needs to be submitted sometime next year before the actual transfer of the land, but to go back to the item that was discussed several months ago, I think we could add that just in if the council wanted to approve it that way.
Thank you, Mr. Landine, I appreciate that. I would, obviously, I've already spoken, so I can't make the motion, but I would just suggest that we include that into this for the sole purpose of providing that in a written format what has already truly been agreed to and just get that in writing. But overall, just want to express my overall support for this project and glad to see it coming forward. Thank you.
And we'll go to Ron Sasso. Ron?
I would like to make a motion to incorporate the securing of finance by the date as Alderman Mason had recommended, and also the 15% which would incorporate square footage, at least not dropping under the current proposed square footage, as well as the number of parking spaces that are being allocated.
Alderman Sasso, if you don't mind my asking, I think you have three, you have three different items in your motion. So, my suggestion is that we do a division of the question and that you offer your First Amendment first, seek a second, and then discuss one amendment at a time unless the council disagrees.
Fair enough. Okay, now I've got to rewind the tape and try to get there again. Okay. First, for securing the financing by January 31st, 2012?
We have a second by right. Everyone understands the motion? This is an amendment. We'll go to Bonnie Peterson. Bonnie?
Thank you. Mr. Mason, is this what you wanted, the securing, or just, is this the motion that you wanted?
Yes, Bonnie, it's just to include the proof of financing at the January 31st.
I'd like to ask Mr. Shaffey if that is agreeable to him.
I believe we have previously committed to provide a new financial commitments by January 31st. We'll still stick with that date.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Any objections to calling the question? Okay, we'll proceed to the vote on the amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion has been amended, the motion remains on the floor. Alderman Sasso?
The second amendment would be to amend, to amend back to 15% variance for both the square footage as well as the number of parking spaces, or should I do those separate as well?
I would recommend separate. I think that the amendment, I think the amendment, Ron, is, it's just, yeah, it's to go to 15% instead of 25% of the 89,000 square feet.
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion by Sasso and a second by Laurenti. We have any discussion? The lights do not appear to be working, we'll go to Alderman Wright first.
For the group to put the 25% behind, is 15% agreeable? Obviously, you came to 25% for a reason. Charity, Dave, you want to talk?
Somebody who would like to...
Are you agreeable to back to 15%? I'm just questioning.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. This actually was discussed during the Legal and Finance Committee, and I would probably turn to Alderwoman Charity Doyle for further explanation, but I'll turn to her.
Is that okay? Just to, I guess, clarify, my reason for bringing that forward was, I understand that we want to have some kind of a protection. Who asked the question? No, who am I directing?
Well, he wants to go back to 15% versus 25%. And your reasoning?
Yeah, the reasoning is, we didn't feel that, aside from our interest in that infrastructure, that it's really our job to tell the developer what they can do with their building, as long as it meets what the RFP was, which was commercials, mixed-use facility. I know a lot of us up here want less government involvement in private development, and so to me, it was just like, well, where are we going to draw the line? And I understand, Bonnie brought up the concern that, well, if it goes too small, then we're going to have a parking ramp with two little retail shops, and, you know, and of course, that's an extreme scenario. You probably know as well as I know that what's going, what it's going to take for these guys to make good on their risk is going to be a much larger square footage building, so that was taking it to the extreme. So, we felt safe, and if it was 25% of the 89,000, that project was going to be dead anyway, just to be blunt, so.
Thank you.
Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can't support the change. It was well thought out the other day to move from 15 to 25. It gives the developers some latitude that they're not in here checking with us every time they're making any change of any kind, and I think Alderwoman Doyle spelled that out very, very well, that there are changes that will take place, but most importantly is they need the latitude to be able to act on a project of this size without the time constraints that we have, and as Charity said, 25% is probably going to kill the project. So, this would be, I would urge you to vote against the amendment.
And we'll go to Ron Sasso. Ron?
Thank you, Mayor. I would use Alderman Nordstrom's example of the hemline and just thinking that, well, okay, if we've got a full-length hem and we take off 15%, we're still at the shin. If we go 25, we're above the knee perhaps, and for a wedding dress, that might be pushing the limit a little. But given the concerns that have been brought up tonight, my feeling is that with that, keeping that protection in there, because there are lots of people now that are expressing interest in we should be going back to RFP, if it was to be dropping under that, below that 15%, that it would be putting the project in danger. I don't think any of us want to see that project fail. If it's moving ahead, we want to see it successful, and one thing I'm going to point out, Mr. Seffner, this is a good indication that downtown Rapid City, there's a lot more interest as previously when there was the last RFP, too, and now there are lots of people who are lining up for this. So, this is a good thing, and there again, Mr. Shaffey's been connected with this pretty much from the beginning, but I would still like to see for the taxpayer to have that protection at 15%. Thank you.
Bonnie Peterson. Bonnie?
Thank you. Mr. Shaffey, I have another question for you. I didn't write down what... I didn't write down what your square footage was on your presentation tonight. Is it still the 89,000 that's on this contract?
We're hoping to be more than 89,000, but currently, the minimum is 89,000, currently.
Okay. I'm, okay, thank you. I would make a, I don't know if we want a substitute motion, or to modify to 20 percent reduction. That way, we'd be meeting in the middle.
Okay. We have a, we have, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Does everyone understand the motion? The motion is, instead of allowing for a 20, 25 percent reduction in the size of the project from 89,000 to 66,000 square feet, it'd be 20 percent. I don't have my calculator handy, but it's in the middle. Do we have a second?
From 80, oh, can I? Okay, I guess not.
Do we have a second? The motion dies for lack of a second. Bonnie is still on the floor.
Thank you. I was just looking at 89,000, the square footage is between 75, from 75,650 to 66,750. And so I thought we could kind of go for about midway, which would be about 70,000, but apparently not. Thank you.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor to take it to, to allow for a 25 percent variance instead of 15. I'd like to pass the gavel over to Council President Davis. I'd like to say just a few words on this. I think it's important to, to clarify, and since I was part of this process from the, from the beginning, and have supported it from the beginning, I think it's important that I state where I'm, I'm at on it and provide a little bit of historical reference. When this was originally presented to the council in 2007, it was an estimated 102,000 square feet, 102,000 square feet, with 50 to 70 residential units, 50 being the minimum. St. Joe Investments, when it transferred, or when it was, when Rushmont pulled out of the project, and then it was, there was a new RFP, and St. Joe Investments applied as one of the two proposals, they proposed a 96,000-square-foot building and a $5 million cap. They proposed that at that, at that time. The Rushmont Charity, with all due respect, it says 23 million, up to 23 million and 85,000 in tax increment funds. Of this, 11.6 was allowed for public improvements, parking structure, et cetera, soil cleanup and power line relocation, and 11.4 up to allowed for financing interests. So we have a $5 million cap, and there's some question as to whether it was intended to be 5 million with interest or 5 million without interest, but on paper, it was a hard cap of 5 million. And the proposal now is to take it from 5 million to the original cap of 23.1. And the new square footage proposed for Presidential Plaza LLC is 89,000 square feet. Under the amendment, as was offered at Legal and Finance last week, a developer would be allowed to put in a structure that is 75 percent of 89,000 square feet, which takes it down to 66,750 square feet, compared to the original Rushmont of 102,000 square feet, with the, with the same financing that was proposed at the Rushmont. And the nature of the project has changed, and the ownership of the project has changed. So we're talking about tripling of the financing. We can call it doubling if you add in the, the interest costs for the $5 million cap, and a reduction, a potential reduction of the size of the project by a third. What we heard earlier in the presentation was a project that was promised to be bigger. We heard earlier that it was, tonight, we heard that it was going to be roughly the original size of the Rushmont, but that's not what the contract says. We heard earlier that it was going to be 30 residential units. That's not what the research that we have in front of us tonight. We have up to 30. And so if this amendment passes, we'll be able to, it will take it back to 15 percent of 89,000 square feet, or 80, I'm sorry, 85 percent of 89,000 square feet. But the 25 percent amendment that was offered in Legal and Finance last week takes down the potential size of this project from 89,000 square feet, which is already smaller than the original 102. Takes it down to 66,000, or takes it down to 66,750 square feet. So I want to make sure that we're all on the same page, and we understand where I'm coming from on this. The reason, one of the reasons that St. Joe Investment Group received the RFP is because they were willing to promise to this community and to this council that they were going to cap the TIF from 23.1 to 5 million, and that gave them a distinct advantage, a tremendous advantage, in the RFP. We now have a transfer of the project, and it was supposed to be a transfer, not a transformation, a transfer. And now we're looking at lifting the cap without giving anyone else a chance. This is the equivalent of reopening a track meet for one runner for a potential 18.1 million dollar prize. And I say potential 18.1 million, because we don't know how much exactly the interest will be. But it says right here in the paper, in the documentation from our city attorney's office, that we're looking at, at a potential add of 18.1 million dollars for the cost of this project. And I want to understand where, I want everyone to understand where I'm coming from on this. I made my position clear, and this has been very hard for me, because I have friends on both sides of the issue. I've taken a beating from both sides on this issue. But I stand to my principles that an RFP process is a process that brings integrity to the process, and by undoing the RFP and removing the cap, it undermines the integrity of the RFP process, and it's unfair to the other applicants who would not have, who do not have access to the additional 18.1 million dollars in their, in an RFP of their own. So just wanted to make sure that everyone understands where I'm coming from, and thank you for the opportunity to say a few words. And we'll recognize Alderman Mason. Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor. And sorry, my light's just not working. You made a couple of comments there that I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm a little interested in, and, and I guess I direct the question to you, Mayor. During April 18th of this year, we, we voted as a council, united and unanimously, for an assignment and novation agreement. And that, that agreement was to transfer the master developer agreement from St. Joe Investment Group LLC to President Plaza LLC. And at that time, according to the record, there's, there was no argument brought up by you at that time. So I'm just curious why, why the, why these issues are being brought up now and not when we actually signed the agreement?
Excellent question, Jordan, and would draw your attention to the research that Joel Landine had put together. On February 22, 2011, it says here, "St. Joe Investments appeared at the city council and informed the council that Hanny Shaffey and Pat Hall joined their development group." "St. Joe Investments indicate there have not been major changes to the initial project elements outlined in the master development agreement. I requested, Alderman Quaker requested, that any significant changes to the original project be brought forward to the council for approval. February 27, Mr. Shaffey does state in the journal that residents could expect to see changes in the proposed project, and Pat Hall indicated that the final product would incorporate the best from both designs." That didn't come back to the council for an RFP. That didn't come back, or, I'm sorry, for approval or presentation or consideration. On April 18, the city council approved an assignment agreement transferring the master development agreement. And so that's, that's where the concern is, is that, is there was a, a joining of the development group, and then apparently, they, they took it over, which, you know, and, and now the project is, and at that time, there wasn't a request for additional financing. We're talking about, the bottom line here is, we're talking about an additional potential 18.1 million dollars in financing.
Mayor, I, I'd just like to ask actually about that statement, then. You're saying this is an additional 18.1 million dollars? I, the reason I'm going to ask about this is going all the way back to May 2 of 2007, you sat on the council, specifically the Legal and Finance Committee, when this was being created, for the tax increment district number 62. And you were a part of, you actually did vote no to this and many other items related to the product, this project throughout time. But I'm, I'm trying to just understand where, where this is coming from, that, that we're adding money, because this was included in the original, as was passed, I believe it's May 7, 2007. So if you could just elaborate on how we're adding money to this TIF, I'd, I'd sure like to hear that clarification.
Jordan, we had an RFP that was awarded to the Rushmont. The Rushmont developers pulled out of the project. There was a new RFP, a new bid, so to speak, a new RFP. The new, in, St. Joe offered a $5 million cap, and that became one, that became part of the impetus for the council accepting their, accepting their RFP. And so to simply go back to the original, it isn't that simple. Because the original develop, developers pulled out, it was offered to a new developer who was willing to put in a cap. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just ask one last quick question, then I'll yield the floor, and I, sorry for the string of questions, I'm just trying to get this clarified. But I'll turn quickly to our city attorney, but I just want to make sure, has the tax increment district number 62 changed, been amended or modified at all to date?
The project plan has never been amended, but the previous developer did commit to limit the amount of tax increment funding to 5 million in a separate agreement, but it was never specified where that 5 million would go. And they did make very clear that it was their understanding of that agreement, that it would be 5 million plus interest, which was never determined what that amount would be.
So just to, just so I'm clear, Mr. Landine, so the master developer agreement had, had a cap added to it, but the actual tax increment district, has that changed?
No. As Mr. Shaffey indicated earlier, that there was never a developer agreement entered into regarding the TIF funds or obligating the city to pay the TIF funds to any developer.
Thank you. I just want to get this cleared up, because unfortunately, I've, I've been hearing a lot of this for a while, that we're adding money to a TIF, which is, I just, I, I personally find that as the record shows, as the documents show, that, that is not true. We are not adding or adjusting or amending in any way with the TID number 62. So I just want to clear the air and lay out and make sure that the information is there and available, and it's factually accurate. Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom. Richie?
Mayor, a couple of, I don't know, parliamentary questions is, are, are we discussing a motion right now? Do we have a motion on the floor?
We do.
Thank you, Mayor.
The motion right now is the, going back to the 25, or 15 percent rather than 25 percent. And that's an amendment.
I'd like to call a question.
You can't, but I'm guessing that the next person who speaks probably will. We'll go to Gary Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not going to support the, the 15 percent. I, I'm going to support the 25 percent, because I think we need that kind of flexibility because of the timeline that we're facing against. But I don't know where Hanny went, but I want him to address that addition on the, to the 18. Did he, he leave the room? Okay. Now, Pat, can you address any of that, or Scott?
Oh, you to...
Okay. Hanny, address that, the, the TIF being run back up to 18.
The TIF that was approved, let me see, Roy could put it up, please. The TIF that was approved on May 7, 2007, had the following items. 92, 9.242 million dollars for parking structure, the soil removal, and the power line, and all the rest of it, which has basically 11 million dollars in financing costs.
Hanny, can you move the microphone closer, please?
I'm sorry. Which has 11 million dollars in financing costs, similar to any TIF that has been established, similar to the TIF that Mrs. Redding has mentioned for the meatpacking plant, and similar to the TIF that was established for the water line, for the water tank on Alkville Road. And incidentally, if I may take a couple of minutes, Mr. Mayor, and council members, just to address that item a little bit. When the construction within five years has been the city's policy, as the city attorney mentioned, that contract being signed is basically expenditure. If we changed that policy, we would have compromised about nearly 20 million dollars worth of improvements that the city just finished, including the Alkville water tank that is feeding the airport with water line. That was constructed with a TIF, and the construction finished nearly a year after the TIF has expired. That's similar to a few more projects that I wouldn't mind bringing, but I don't want to bore you with that. As far as the TIF for the meatpacking plant, you know, Ms. Redding, Mrs. Redding said, you know, that she agreed with that TIF, that's the only one she supported, which is TIF number 50. The TIF that is before you is for public parking and public improvements, okay? You know, I had mentioned before, this is downtown business district. No structure is required to provide any parking. Okay? Mr. McCarthy said his taxes are going to subsidize his competitor. No, he's not subsidizing his competitor. He's actually creating parking in the downtown to provide parking for the businesses and the buildings that he owns downtown.
Mr. Shaffey, can you answer Mr. Brown's question? If we open it up for a debate, then we almost have to give everybody else a chance to refute...
You, you promised, Mr. Mayor, that I would be, given the chance to address the questions that are raised by the public and by the council. You know, that's a question that was raised before. You know, the TIF that was created for number 50, it was amended four times. The TIF that is created for this parking lot was not amended yet, not even once, and we hope not it can be, it cannot be amended, will not be amended, hopefully, not even once. Okay? The TIF for the meatpacking plant, these are the items that are included, okay? I wonder how much of that is public, okay? Public infrastructure. Mrs. Redding is the same one that claimed that Walmart will never happen, they just finished paving the parking lot, okay? In her public comments. Tell you what, folks, these are the projects, Mr. Mayor, that were done, and these are the comparisons with the dates on them. You asked that, okay? And you said you've given, given me a chance to address those. The parking with the Rushmont is 575 parking spots. 280 of them were going to be leased to the public. The rest of it was going to be utilized with the building, okay? Commercial, 52,000 square feet. Residential, 50 to 70 residential. And by the way, like any good business people, we do a market study before we put our plan out. And we did do a market study there, and I'll be more than happy to share it with this here and share it with everybody else. Okay? The real estate taxes at that time were $700,000, okay? Mr. McCarthy's proposal, you know, he sent you an email, and you folks know what's in it, okay? The St. Joe Development Group on September 21st, incidentally, on their presentation during the RFP, you could, folks, look at the tape, in a special city council meeting, their tape that they have, they've never stated the $5 million cap during the interview, okay? And you could always check it out, and anybody else could. And you could always check it out, and anybody else could. It's available for any public review. The five million dollar cap came about during the discussions and negotiations for the master developers agreement. The master developers agreement does not state anything about scope for this project other than three hundred, other than three hundred and fifty parking spots that the city will use for public use or own, and the St. Joe group leases them all back, other than a hundred and eighty parking stalls for a net gain of forty-five parking spots. And that's what the city attorney has summarized and given to every one of you, okay? As far as their project, on August 19th, 2010, they have revised their project plan and gave you folks a report, in which they reduced their project plan to no residential whatsoever. And as a matter of fact, they, they said they lost the Gunderson Palmer as a client, and therefore they recommended that the commercial be reduced to forty thousand square feet. Today's plan has up to six hundred, okay? Minimum of five hundred and seventy-five parking spots, okay? We're comparing apples to apples, not apples to pears, okay? Six hundred parking spots, which is larger than what originally proposed when the TIF got established, two hundred and eighty parking spots of those will still be available for public lease. The project side, the commercial, and I tell you what, the commercial side of it only is eighty-nine thousand square feet. And by the way, most of that is already committed. The folks that are complaining about empty storefronts in downtown, I got forty-two thousand square feet downtown, okay? They're leased, they're fully leased, a hundred percent. I got two hundred and four apartments within this community. Total investment more than, more than twenty-six million dollars, okay? It's all a hundred percent occupied. You know why? Because of the customer service and the way we treat people, okay? Tell you what, the total for the current plan far exceeds the Rushmont, and the reason it does, because the demand is there, okay? We just got a fish for it. You cannot give up on the fish just after one hour of fishing, okay? That's what grandpa used to tell me, okay? The TIF component, still the same as the Rushmont. The Rushmont components of the TIF was based on 2007 costs, and we still trying to live up to those costs, even though everybody knows that there is inflation. We're taking that risk, not the city, okay? You're limited to the two point eight million dollars. Our liability is limitless, okay? So therefore, please, I ask you, we need a unanimous vote to show that we are committed and we're unified as a community to attract businesses in a hard times like this. Thank you.
Alderman Brown, you stole the floor.
I'm not gonna ask him another question. But I am gonna support the twenty-five percent. I thought the rationale that was given at the legal and finance, and again here tonight, time is of the essence. We need to get this project going, and I wouldn't expect a developer to keep running in, back and checking with us at every little hemline question that they might have. So, I will be supporting twenty-five percent. Thank you.
We'll go to Bonnie Peterson. Bonnie?
Thank you. I just wanna make a couple of comments. I am going to support the fifteen percent, just to get the citizens more protection. Also, I'm just gonna make a general comment, because I imagine we'll probably go to the other vote pretty fast. And that is that I think most of us on the council see this as a difference between eleven point six million plus interest and the five million plus interest. And so it's not such a dramatic jump. However, having said that, I would say that it's really, we're still between a rock and a hard place, because I think there's legitimate concerns raised by each side. And I think as a council, we missed the opportunity to go out to RFP, and we shouldn't, you know, that's when we should have balked at that time, but we didn't. And I, I'm gonna vote for the fifteen percent, and then I'm gonna vote to support that we, the other modifications on this, on this contract. Thank you.
We'll go to John Roberts. John?
Just what everybody was waiting for, to hear me speak. I am gonna support the twenty-five percent. I think they need to have more, more lateral, they, they need to be able to have some room on this project. And, I'm also gonna support your project in a, in a whole. I think this is gonna be good for the community of Rapid City. And anybody that knows me knows how much I hate TIFs, period. But, we're taking a piece of property that hasn't had anything on it for thirty-five years, and we're gonna put it back on the tax rolls. That's what TIFs were intended to do. They were intended to generate economic growth within our city. That's what this is gonna do. I've been waiting for years to see a TIF that was actually developed and designed to do what it was supposed to do. Now I see it, and I have the chance to vote on it, and I am gonna vote yes. So thank you.
Alderman Steve Lorenti. Steve?
I just wanted to speak in support of the fifteen percent control. I think any developer who is getting this kind of support and public assistance, there should be some controls that the public should see and that the council should see. And I'm sure that any of the competitors, compete, competitors that spoke a bit tonight, I should say their competitors, because there isn't any competition in this so far, would love to be able to have this project and have a fifteen percent control where they've got to come back, or we've got to make sure that we're controlling the size of this project. Because, I'll be honest with you, I don't know how many different square footages I've heard tonight, but anybody that's at home tonight, I can guarantee you they have no idea what the square footage, footages are, what the controls are. And that is exactly why we need to have this fifteen percent. So I'll be supporting that. Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom. Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. I won't call the question. But I just wanted to say that, I'll leave that up to another council member, I would prefer to do that. Sam, I'm with you. I've been getting beat up by both sides as well, so I can emphasize with you what you're experiencing. The, the, it kinda takes me back a few years to when the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center was built. Similar conversations took place at that time as well, as to what, what was gonna be built, how it was gonna be built, and all of those issues. So, at that time, Stan Adelstein and I were on the same side. I was glad to have him on the side, that we were developing something over there. And, so I used his model from back then for this current experience, that this is a good project, this is a good, good, good mission that we're on. Because I remember what he stated to me at one time, was saying that people objected to a road up to Mount Rushmore. This kind of, for me, follows in that same line, is that people are objecting to a road to Mount Rushmore. I'd like to see that road and, getting developed. And, to answer some of the other questions and concerns from the other council members about TIFs and not liking them, I'd just like to remind the council members that the TIFs were abused at one time, but then certain policies, rules and regulations were placed on the TIFs to abate some of those issues and concerns that were used in, in those abuses. So I think the, the plan that the staff has put together for, or, excuse me, this council has put together in the, in the past for addressing the issues and concerns that, for the use and abuse of TIFs from the past, have been well addressed. And if, if we go back to control, a city government controlling private enterprise, and I can't believe I'm saying this, is that city government controlling private enterprise that tight on this hemline, and, and we do have, begs the question of what, what is the protection of the hemline? Is that what we're protecting? So that's what, kinda what it boils down to me, is the real fundamentals for me guys is that it, is, I'm, no matter which way I'm voting on this one, I'm upsetting friends on either side of this, on this, on this, not only up here on the dais, but also out in the public. So no matter which way I'm going on this. But, to me, it comes down to is that how can we get more jobs out there? How can we get good quality businesses downtown and improve downtown as well? And I, I yield the floor. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Mason?
Call the question.
Are there any objections to calling the question?
Yes.
We do have an objection. Let's have a second to the motion to call the question. We have a motion by Mason and a second by Brown to call the question. We're going to proceed to a vote on simply calling the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
You need to...
Okay, the clarification, the, the motion that we're voting on is to simply, to end debate. That's all it is. And to proceed to the motion on the floor.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor of ending debate, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Lorenti.
No.
Nordstrom.
Aye.
Mason.
Aye.
Doyle.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll proceed immediately to the vote on the amendment, and the amendment is to take the percentage that the developer would need to build from twenty-five percent of eighty-nine thousand to fifteen, back to fifteen percent of eighty-nine thousand. This is just the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Davis.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Roberts.
No.
Brown.
No.
Wright.
No.
Lorenti.
Aye.
Nordstrom.
No.
Mason.
No.
Doyle.
No.
Sasso.
Aye.
Motion fails, three to seven.
Okay, we will now proceed to the vote on item thirty-seven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number sixty-three, or sixty-two.
Item sixty-two is to approve the appointment of the 2013 citizen advisory committee, and I move to approve.
Motion by Mason, second by Roberts, and we'll go to Ron Sasso. Ron?
I pulled it.
Sorry.
I, I was just wondering, in, in committee, we were, we were looking, some of the people on this committee were wanting their roles clarified, and we were looking at, did we clarify those roles, the responsibilities and the goals of this committee? That's all I wanna know.
I believe we have. Pauline has been...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe when we put the request for interested citizens, we had a limited information on the agenda, or on the website as to what their roles would be. And quite honestly, we have a preliminary agenda set up to really outline what their, their purpose of the process is, what their role in the process is. And so I'm hoping with that, they will have more clarification. I know if, I've gotten phone calls, I've had discussions with them, I've emailed them back as, as the questions have come in, but we do have a presentation that Mary actually put together for the first meeting.
So it's forthcoming at this point?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Gary Brown. You have the floor. No? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number sixty-three. Alderman Mason?
Thank you. Item sixty-three is to approve including all appointed positions in the city's employee severance plan, and I will yield the floor.
Do we have a motion? We'll go to Jerry Wright.
I'll make a motion to delay this for up to two to four weeks, whatever's appropriate for more discussion and work by the council.
Can you clarify to...
I'd say four, four weeks.
Back to legal and finance?
Yes.
Okay. And that's okay with the second here?
It is.
Okay. The motion by Wright and the second by Roberts is to take this back to legal and finance for the discussion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now at the end of the consent calendar, and we will go to, we're on items seventy to seventy-one. Would anyone like to pull item seventy or seventy-one? If not, can we have a motion to approve?
Seven.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion to continue items seventy and seventy-one until November 21, 2011. Motion by Wright, second by Brown. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Chair would like to call for a five-minute recess. Any objection?
Break in, break in about seven minutes. Break him about seven minutes.
Do you want the floor? Okay, we're coming out of recess, and Alderman Laurenti has asked for the floor. Steve, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to first apologize to my colleagues because I would, on item 37, I'm going to offer a motion to reconsider purely so that I, my position can be clarified. I misunderstood, because we had the amendment to, for the controls on 15% on the project, and then we went to a vote on 25, but also along with that was the lifting of the cap, which I was not aware of. So I would like to offer a motion to reconsider item 37 so that I can clarify my position, and I would appreciate a second.
We have a motion by Laurenti and a second by Peterson to reconsider item number 37. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Roll call, please.
Peterson. Roberts. Brown. Wright. Laurenti.
I'm not sure where. Yes.
Nordstrom. Mason. Doyle. Sasso. Davis. Fails three to seven.
Alderman Laurenti, I think the motion and your statement would be in the record so that clarifies your position, so...
Thank you.
Would you like to make a statement for the record?
I would, absolutely. I would, absolutely. And I saved a lot of my comments for, unfortunately, item 74, so again, I want to apologize. But the reality is, is that I wanted to comment about the fact that this council wants to participate in the private sector in a very large way. And tonight, we had the opportunity, at a minimum, to bring this back to an RFP and make it a competitive situation, because I believe we heard some people who also had the ability to bring this project to fruition, but they're not going to get a chance to do that, because we're going to move forward, we're going to lift the cap, and we're going to go. And that was not my intention. And again, I apologize, but I want to be on the record as voting against lifting the cap. And I also want to let the citizens of Rapid City know that I understand their frustration with our TIP process. I know that we had a forum last week, in fact, where citizens were complaining about the fact that they have a hard time seeing the striping on the roads. And the comment was made by one of our elected officials that that, the more expensive striping, which lasts longer, isn't in the budget. We can't afford that. And at the same time tonight, we are spending millions of the taxpayers' dollars. And I have a really hard time supporting such a thing when infrastructure of Rapid City is crumbling. We all know it. We've all run on the platform of increasing or improving the city's infrastructure, and yet we are making it a priority to do many other things besides fix the city's infrastructure. We aren't taking care of the priorities of the, what the citizens want. And I'm all for, I'm all for increasing the number of jobs, but I don't believe that's government's responsibility, nor should any of us be taking responsibility for creating jobs. Mr. Chaffey and Mr. Hall are the job creators and all of the other entrepreneurs. And the last thing that the public sector should be doing is participating with the private sector. It creates many, many problems, and our infrastructure is suffering because of it, because the priority has been to spend those dollars, because, well, those are flashy items, those things garner great attention. Fixing streets and putting down the best striping, which apparently we can't afford for some reason.
You'll be able to make most of your comments under item 74.
I appreciate that, and I just want to air that out, because I was really saving those comments for item 74. But I appreciate your time, Mr. Mayor, and I yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now going to move to the non-consent items 72 through 86. Can we have a motion to open public comment for items 72 through 86? Motion by Roberts and a second by Peterson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item, we're now into public comments for items 73 through 86, and we'll go to item 74, Mike Derby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I made my comments earlier. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sumner, I believe you had a speaker request form from 74, on 74 also, would you like to speak?
I will agree that I probably said everything that needed to be said on the previous item.
Thank you. And we'll go to Paul Weber, item 76. Paul, thank you for your patience tonight.
No problem. Paul Weber, 315 San Marco. Item 76 is a request or appeal for converting an on-premise sign at PetSmart to an off-premise. And I hope everybody looked at their little information that was on the, on your agenda today, but I know at the public working that I was at, you know, there was concern about change in the structure. Nothing is going to be changed on the sign. Only thing that's changing is the rubloff wants to split the lot and allow the tenants at those shops, buildings, to have panels or advertise their businesses on that sign. Like I said, the structure's not changing, the height's not changing, it's lighted now, and it'd stay lighted if it's allowed to, but it's just plain and simple, just nothing, nothing's going to change. You know, the city's changed to, like, on the border, that's considered an off-premise sign. Same principle. The owners have split the lot, they needed to leave the two open panels for future use. Up on Mount Rushmore Road, where the Comfort Inn sign is, same thing. Again, the owner wanted to subdivide and sell the lot, and that sign now is considered off-premise. So all we're trying to do is make it so that the shops, the little strip mall behind PetSmart, is able to advertise their store name on that sign. So, if there's any other questions, you can ask.
Thank you. And we'll recognize Lynn Kendall on item 83. She did, okay. David Crabbe, items 83 and 84, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is David Crabbe, 4084 Canyon Drive, Ward Three. I am filling, I am speaking to you tonight on behalf of the Rapid City Chamber of Commerce. Our president, CEO, and vice president all could not be here, and so I'm filling in, reading some of their notes. I apologize for the reading, but on behalf of the chamber, we thank the council and the community for all the interaction that we've had over the years with various community projects and functions. And recently, we've taken the ball and led a forum with the Rapid City Journal and been speaking with many members of the community and many members of the council on the lengthening of terms issue for municipal offices. It's been great public input, both for and against, and we've been proud to be a member of that discussion. During this process, we just wanted to go on record of saying, we heard some people thinking the chamber was just representing the good old boys and big business, and they think we have a different stake in the game. Really, our stake in the game is for the benefit of the community of Rapid City, and we're not just for the good old boys and big business. In fact, we support all of the community functions, increasing tax revenues for schools, support on low unemployment, support diversity and quality of life issues for our community. And to say, really, the chamber is, we have 85% of our members are small businesses. Those are businesses that have 20 or less employees. We have 1,300 member businesses. They employ 33,000 employees out of our 70,000 population of the community. That's your Rapid City chamber. Those are members of our wards, there's members of our community. And with that, just in speaking on the motions that will be tonight, we would like to continue to work with the council and the journal and whatever that we can do in trying to determine what the proper length of term should be and the process to get there. We don't know the best way. We need jury input to get there, and we look forward to working with you on that.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to close public comment for items 72 through 86? We have a motion by Brown and a second by Roberts to close public comment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're now on to item number 72. Gary Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. 72 is a request by Renton Associates LLC for Bob Acres for a preliminary plat for proposed lots one and two of Track Five revised of Signal Heights Edition located north of the intersection of East Boulevard and Kellogg Place. Moved to continue. November 21st.
We're on 72.
Oh, I'm sorry, 72. I apologize. I had circled that. 72 is a request by Britton Engineering and Land Surveying Incorporated for John Roberts Trust for a layout plat located at the southwest corner of the intersection of East St. Patrick Street and Cherry Avenue. I move to approve.
We have a motion by Brown and a second by Peterson. Any discussion? With stipulations? And it's a different John Roberts, just in case people are wondering. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 73, Gary?
A request by Dream Design International Incorporated for a preliminary plat for proposed lot one of Block Eight of Elks Crossing located at the east corner of the intersection of Marlin Drive and East Minnesota Street. I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Brown and a second by Peterson. We have a motion by Brown and a second by Roberts for approval with stipulations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 74, Alderman Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 74 is to authorize Mayor and Finance Officer to sign contract for construction of public improvements through private developer tax increment District Number 62 between Plaza LLC and the city of Rapid City, South Dakota, and I move to approve.
We have a motion by Mason and a second by Roberts. Any discussion? And we'll recognize Charity Doyle. Charity?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say something for Steve, you know, that we have an opportunity here to create several types of revenue where there right now is none, and that is going to benefit CIP and the general fund and Point 1.6 and things so that we can get your striping.
We'll go to Gary Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve McCarthy pointed me out in, in part of his comments and that, and about how I would like to have competition against government. And I'd like to just bring up a couple of things, and Steve may relent this, too. 1985, remember 1985, Mike? Chamber. We had a, my first, I was president of the chamber, my first mediums for economic development down at what was the Hilton Hotel at that time. And the person that I came in with to meet was John Hammons. He was building, wanted to build a hotel in this town, which had been direct competition with me, with 1% government money. And that's why he was here. And there was a heck of a fight. And everybody said, like they did with the Civic Center, can't make it, too tough competition. We don't need it, for crying out loud, what the Sam Hill we're going to do with 1%? That's not fair. Now, people are saying what we need is another tower down at the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center. I survived for 33-plus years operating against 1% money. If government has a place to help bring in projects that local developers can't or won't do, and that's just one example. And I saw it on both sides of the issue that time. So, in my opinion, there is a place for it. Thank you.
Ron Sasso.
Thank you, Mayor. As, as somebody who has also spoken against TIFs, I think Alderman Roberts said it very well, that this is one of those, one of those situations where, right now, there's no money coming in. Money will come in, and, and one of the reasons I was pushing, really pushing on that 15%, the bigger that building is, the more real estate taxes we will get for the long haul. And there again, as, as proposed, it, it is something where we will be looking at, a lot of revenue over time. And, you know, and I think if it's a larger convention center, the benefits for the city, as we've heard the Chamber of Commerce say, this is something that we do need. Ideally, that will happen, and we can bring in larger conventions, which will also be bringing in dollars from out of state, out of town, to Rapid City. So, I'm, I'm hopeful and optimistic on this. So, I believe it's, we should move on at this point with that. Thank you.
Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to say thank you to this council. This particular item, I have watched this, this council in the last couple of weeks mature, and I jokingly call it our debutante ball. You, you all came out this week. You, you did your research, you met some very, very interesting opposition in, in different ways over the weekend especially. There was a full court press put on everybody, there was a, a ton of misinformation put out there. There was legal confusion, our city attorney worked terribly hard. Joel, Tamra, thank you both very much, the direction that you've taken us through. But there's still a couple of other questions that were laid out during the, the weekend of misconception that I, I want to make sure that everybody is okay on, because I think they're very, very important points. One of them is, one of, one of the things that I was hit with multiple times from either emails or phone calls was this ambiguous threat of what happens if it gets halfway to the sky and they quit? They run out of money, or whatever, the, you know, the partnership breaks up, or whatever. Well, fortunately, the city attorney's office was very, very clear in the master developers' agreement that there's a performance bond clause, that if this thing breaks apart, the bonding company will pay to replace it. And Bonnie was joking earlier, but it would be, in fact, a windfall for the city because there's also a clause in the contract that says that if they default, that we don't fund the defaulted company with the TIF. Pat and Hanny, as Bonnie said, we're not suggesting that you default on this, okay? That's not the idea. But, but, I mean, some of the things that were brought up as areas of confusion or trying to mislead, I, I, once again, want to compliment this council for having the tenacity to keep asking the questions and finding the truth and doing the right thing. There was a suggestion along the way that what we should do is just throw this one out and start with a new RFP. And there's a lot of reasons why one might want to do that, but there's one serious reason why one doesn't. And that's the integrity of this city, the integrity of this council. We have a contract. And until that contract isn't valid, anything we do to just arbitrarily go out and find a new RFP, we're the ones that are breaking the contract. Now, aside from the potential legal ramifications, how would any of you feel about doing business with a city that you know halfway through something will go out and shop a new buyer? I mean, I, I think that debutante ball again is, is, you know, as a kid, you took a lady to a dance and you found a prettier one? You know, you don't leave her halfway through the dance to go chasing down the prettier one. And that's what I saw happening.
[laughing].
But, well, I guess I was, Gary, I was really, really lucky that I had the prettiest one on my arm and she's still with me. How's that? But you don't, thank you. Hi, Joni. You don't do that. And that's, I think that would be very difficult for us to do business next week, or next month, or next year. And, and to me, that's the most important piece here, is the integrity of this city. To, to vote any other way than to go forward is voting against your own integrity. And I find that very, very difficult to do. So, I will be supporting this again. Thank you.
Jordan Mason. Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor. Call the question.
Are there any objections to calling the question? Are there any objections to calling the question? Seeing none, we're going to proceed to a vote. The motion is for approval on item 74. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries with one no from Alderman Laurenti. Go ahead. All right.
A little historical perspective in talking about public-private funding, and I just want a little historic thought by all of our community, including constituents and my good colleagues. Some things to think about when we talk about public-private, good and bad, and should it be done, and some history involved. The Transcontinental Railroad, the Union Pacific and the Northern Pacific, the Erie Canal, the Department of Defense and the development of jet aircraft and radar, GIS, GPS systems, computers, TVA, where we brought in power and water and so forth to the Tennessee Valley, the Hoover Dam, which energized and brought water to Southern California and power to Las Vegas, which is an economic development thing, and a state involvement in railroads in such places as New York, Pennsylvania, Indiana, and Illinois. So, this is not the first time there's been a public-private partnership, and some of them have been extremely successful and brought us from the Stone Age to the Steel Age. Thank you.
And with that, we will move to item number 75. Alderman Mason.
Thank, thank you. Item 75 is the Ad Hoc Sign Code Revision Task Force Committee Recommendation Number 10, Section A, Explanation, and I will yield the floor.
Charity Doyle?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to urge my colleagues that we have an opportunity here to make this fair. And right now, I don't see it as fair. Could you guys stop talking for just a minute? I'm, I'm sorry, I just, you're in my ear. You know, we have 15-day window, as this is written right now, for a business, one time only for a grand opening. And we have 30 days for a nonprofit or civic. It's just not fair. We need to be consistent. So, I would urge one of my colleagues to bring that into whatever number you think is pertinent to bring that parity. Thank you.
Dave Davis.
Thank you, Alderman Doyle, for the great segue, because I would like to offer an amendment and then retain the floor after a second if I could. And the amendment would be to replace Section A, Subsections 1 and 2, to read a permit may be issued for a temporary sign not to exceed 15 feet in height, twice a calendar year, each for a period not to exceed 30 days in duration. The permit may authorize such signage at multiple locations throughout the city. If I could get a second, I'd like to retain.
We have a motion by Davis and a second by Brown. The floor is yours, Dave.
Thank you, Mayor. The intent of this is exactly to address what Alderman Doyle has brought up. We had a, a different set of criteria, whether you were a new business with a grand opening, whether you were a nonprofit, a fraternal, a civic, a charitable. It, I mean, a sign is a sign and clutter is clutter, the source of it shouldn't matter. It's also a code, a code enforcement nightmare. So, this will allow something very, very simple. Any business can have two different times throughout the year where they can come down and get a permit. It's good for 30 days. They can have something that uses the same height that was in the, the previous language, but it gives everybody an opportunity. It doesn't restrict trade, but it knocks down the clutter a little bit. And I think it's a, a good compromise that will make code enforcement a lot easier and move forward. So, I would urge you to go ahead and vote this through.
Everyone understands the motion? We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 76, Alderman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 76 is a request by Rapid City LLC to convert an on-premise sign to an off-premise sign as per Section 15.28.050Q of the Rapid City Municipal Code for the sign located at 925 Dist. Drive, legally described as proposed Lot A of Lot 1R and Lot B of Lot 1R, a five-star subdivision located in the northwest quarter of Section 25. T2NR7ABHM, Rapid City, Painton County, South Dakota. And I yield to the floor.
And we'll go to Bonnie Peterson.
We have a motion to deny the request to convert the on-premise sign to an off-premise sign. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Seeing none? Motion dies for lack of a second. Bonnie, you still have the floor.
Thank you. The reason I made the motion to deny, well, multiple reasons. One is that off-premise signs function totally different. The rules for them off and on are totally different. Right now, what he's asking for seems reasonable. However, there's no guarantee in the past that each of these signs won't turn into a billboard. And also, on the 2020 strategic plan that someone just mentioned earlier, it talked about reducing billboards, which this is essentially the same thing, because it gets to operate under the same rules as the billboard, because it becomes an off-premise sign. So, basically, and that the Board of Appeals has voted to deny this. So, that would be my rationale, because even though they might say they're going to put one's kind of sign up in five years, they might do something else and put there and change that. So, thank you.
Okay, we do not have a motion on the floor. We'll go to Richie Nordstrom. Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. This came from the Ad Hoc Sign Code Revision Task Force, and, let's see, essentially, we came out of there with, to, to not support the change, or, or, anyway, we wanted to kind of have the structure the same as it is now and not make any changes, so it doesn't get into the area of, of a billboard. But I want to call upon staff to clarify this a little bit further. I'll yield the floor to Joel for some comments from DOT and some, some other minutes, maybe perhaps what the task force also came up, not the task force, the sign code came up with.
Thank you, Mayor. The Department of Transportation issued a letter to Brad Solon on November 2nd, which unfortunately, we didn't have until this morning and was linked this morning. So, it's attached now, and in that letter, they withdrew any objection, they looked at it again and decided that it would not require a billboard permit. I also attached a memo. This sign will not function as a billboard, it cannot, under the ordinance. It functions as an on-premise sign for the two that are parcels that it's designated to serve. It has to have advertisements or goods, products, services for those locations, and it cannot be structurally altered. So, it cannot be converted into a billboard, and it specifically states that it would never be subject to off-premise sign credits. So, it really does function as an on-premise sign for those two locations. In some ways, although I think the owner could, if they subdivided the property, put up another sign for the, the property on which the strip mall is currently located, this would really function as a sign for both parcels in lieu of building another sign. If you did not approve the exception, the current sign would likely stay, and they would just come in and obtain an on-premise permit to build a sign on the new parcel. But it just wouldn't have any, or it wouldn't have very good exposure to the interstate, which is probably why they're doing what they're doing.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Joel. Brad, do you have any additional comments to this? No? I know we had some discussion about this in the, in the committee with the Sign Code Board of Appeals. Sorry, guys, I get the names all wrong here in some cases, so apologize for that. So, what we were concerned about at the board is that if the structure was moved to an off-premise status, actually, the sign would stay in the same location, but if it got moved to an off-premise status, it could potentially be moved into or considered to be a billboard at that point. We wanted to make sure, coming from the sign code, that the structure would stay exactly the same, the pole would not move, the, the square footage would not alter. So, essentially, what they would do is, come time, the appropriate time, they would change the face on it, and that was, that would be it. Have we, Joel, have we got to a comfort zone yet as far as illumination on that?
I'm comfortable with that the sign can remain the way it is right now. It cannot be structurally altered. So, the sign that you've got there now is the sign you're going to have. It's just, what it'll really allow them to do is put a face, there's, I think, six slots in there to advertise the spaces in the strip mall. It will allow them to put the names of the businesses in those spots in the strip mall on that sign, even though it is technically not located on the parcel, if it is subdivided, it's not located on the parcel where the strip mall is, is located.
And, and, Mayor, if I may, the largest consideration for the, for the Sign Code Board was the concern that the state, DOT had for, for this sign, and with their drawing, withdrawing of the objection. And with the stipulations put on this, I feel that we can move forward with this as, as, as a motion to stipulations put on this, I feel that we can move forward with this as a motion to go from, and Joel, correct me if I'm misstating this, but go from an on-premise to an off-premise, but with the stipulations that Joel's outlined.
We'll recognize Jordan Mason.
Thank you. I would like to make the motion to approve.
We have a motion by Mason and a second by everyone else. Give credit to Alderman Roberts. Any discussion on that motion? We'll go to Charity Doyle. Charity? All in favor, John, did you want to speak?
No.
Okay. We're going to proceed to the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Item seventy-seven. Gary?
Thank you, Mayor. Approved change order number one F to Hills Materials Company for Keps Water Main Extension Project Number W one zero dash one seven zero two slash CIP Number five zero sixty-five for an increase of thirteen thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty-one cents. Now I'll yield the floor because I have to abstain.
Motion by Davis, second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have one abstention from Gary Brown. Bids.
First item for bids is the water reclamation facility pre-treatment improvements for the washer-compactor procurement project. We received one bid on this. However, the engineer's estimate was a hundred eighty-seven, nine hundred, a hundred eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars, and the bid came in at one hundred and seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. So the recommendation is to award the bid to Huber Technology, Inc. in that amount.
Motion by Davis, second by Nordstrom on seventy-eight. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Seventy-nine?
Seventy-nine is for the water reclamation facility pretreating improvements screen equipment procurement project. We received four bids on this. Recommendation is to award the bid to Huber Technology in the amount of one hundred eighty-five thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Motion by Brown, second by Roberts. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I'm sorry, Ron, you had your light on to speak.
Just a question, because being it was the bid and the engineer's estimate, there was such a huge gap. Was there any change in the project with that?
I would defer that question to either Public Works Director Terry Waltersdorf or City Engineer Dale Teck.
Barry?
They were just very favorable bids, but there was really no change to what we were bidding out.
Excellent. Thank you.
We'll proceed to a vote, and I apologize, Ron, for missing you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item eighty?
Item eighty is for the two thousand eleven manhole adjustment project. We received four bids on this. The recommendation is to actually reject all bids and then to be able to rebid this at a later date with modifications to the schedule.
Motion by Davis, second by Roberts to reject all bids. All in favor say aye. Do we need a motion?
I would please also have part of the motion to authorize rebidding that as well.
Yep, I believe Alderman Davis said that, and everyone agrees. So we'll move on to eighty-one.
Eighty-one is actually a quote, but you see it before you, because we have already done some business with this company this year. So we received four quotes on the fire station number four sprinkler system. The recommendation is to award the base bid and alternate one in the amount of thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars to Midwestern Mechanical.
Motion by Peterson, second by Roberts to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item eighty-two has been taken care of. Item eighty-three is a reconsideration notice. Just before I turn the floor over to Alderman Davis, just want to remind everyone of the rules of reconsideration, since this doesn't come up very often. It can only be amended if it's officially reconsidered. It can be clarified, but it can only be amended or changed if it's officially reconsidered. Only Alderman on the prevailing side may offer a motion to reconsider. So with that, we will go to Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. I am not going to offer a motion to reconsider, but just bring a little clarification in. The motion at the last council meeting was a little bit unclear, and that was why I offered the motion to reconsider, so that I made sure that all the parties involved understood. And the motion in a clarified form, actually, just an explanation of it, is that the council will sponsor and hold five additional town hall, council-driven town hall meetings, one in each ward, for the purpose of hearing the public opinion. Depending on the outcome of these meetings, the council will take one of the following three actions. One, do nothing, leave the ordinance as it stands. Two, change the existing ordinance, by ordinance, and extend the term lengths. Or three, invite the interested parties, such as the Chamber and the Rapid City Journal, to promote an initiated measure to change the term lengths. A little better explanation, Dave? Cool.
Would anyone like to offer a motion to reconsider eighty-three? If not, we'll move to eighty-four. Okay. Item eighty-four, Alderman Davis.
Same as eighty-three.
Anyone like to offer a motion to reconsider eighty-four? If not, we'll move on to eighty-five. Eighty-five. Alderman Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any action?
We do not need to take any action on that at all.
Okay. We'll move on then to item eighty-five A, which is announcement of fallen officers' memorial dedication, and we'll recognize John Roberts. John, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just want to personally invite all my council members and all the people of Rapid City. Sunday, November thirteenth, we're going to dedicate the memorial to the fallen officers on the site up on Anamosa Street. I've been very honored to be a part of this committee, and it looks like, very easily, it's going to come and be done. So I'm very proud, very honored, and I hope that all of you will join us up there to dedicate this and just to remember these wonderful men and what they did. So, thank you very much.
It's at 2:00 PM on Sunday, November thirteenth.
Yes.
At the intersection of Anamosa and Greenbrier at New Beginnings, the lawn of New Beginnings Baptist Church. And we will do a notice through the Finance Office, so all the council will be invited to attend. And I want to use this opportunity to thank John. I know many people were involved in this, but you especially put a lot of work into this, John, and I want to, I want to thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Not, do we have a motion to acknowledge eighty-five A? Okay, we have a motion by Brown, second by Sasso to acknowledge eighty-five A. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item eighty-six, Vision Twenty-Two update. We'll recognize Terry or Dale. We'll recognize Terry Waltersdorf, our new Public Works Director.
There are no updates at this time, Mayor.
Okay. Do we have a motion to acknowledge?
Some.
Motion by Davis, second by Roberts to acknowledge. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're now on public hearing items eighty-seven to one oh three. Do we have a motion to open public hearing? We have a motion by Brown, second by Roberts to open public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Public hearing is now open. We do not have any speaker request forms on eighty-seven to one oh three. So we'll go first to continued public hearing consent items eighty-seven through ninety. If we do not have a request to remove any of these items, can we please have a motion to continue these? We have a motion by Mason, second by Peterson to continue these three items till November twenty-one. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Items eighty-seven through ninety have been continued to November twenty-one. Let's now close public hearing on eighty-seven to one oh three. Do we have a motion? Motion by Davis, second by Mason to close public hearing comment on eighty-seven to one oh three. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're now on consent public hearing items, items ninety-one through ninety-seven. Would anyone like to remove any of these items? If not, can we have a motion to approve ninety-one through ninety-seven? Okay, we have a motion to approve items ninety-one through ninety-seven. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. And that was a motion by Brown and a second by Mason. Is that right? Okay. It says ninety-seven. Okay, so we're now on ninety-eight, or this is the non-consent public hearing items, items ninety-eight through one oh three. So we'll start with ninety-eight. Jordan Mason?
Thank you, Mayor. This is second reading of Ordinance Fifty-seven Sixty-nine, an ordinance amending Section seventeen point zero six of Chapter Seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code for rezoning from general agricultural district to general commercial district, and this is for the area located southeast of the intersection of Catron Boulevard and Bent Drive, and I approve in conjunction with association of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
Motion by Mason and second by Peterson to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item ninety-nine, Jordan?
Item ninety-nine is second reading, Ordinance Fifty-seven Seventy-eight, an ordinance amending Section seventeen point zero six of Chapter Seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and this is rezoning from low-density residential district to general commercial district, and this is for the area located to the westerly edge of said Nugget Gulch Road and located southeast of the intersection of Catron Boulevard and Bent Drive, and I approve in conjunction, again, with the association of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
Motion by Mason, second by Sasso to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. One hundred.
Item one hundred is second reading, Ordinance Fifty-seven Seventy-one, an ordinance amending Section seventeen point zero six of Chapter Seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and this is rezoning from office commercial district to general commercial district, and this is for the area located southeast of intersection of Catron Boulevard and Bent Drive, and I approve in conjunction with the associated Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
Second.
We have a motion by Mason, second by Doyle. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. One oh one, Jordan?
Item one oh one is to authorize the mayor finance officer to sign the waiver of right protest for the future assessment for the installation of installment pavement curb, gutter sidewalk, street light conduit, water, and sewer along the six-foot-wide unmanned right-of-way, and this is for the area located at twenty-three six four eight at Strato Rim Drive, and I move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mason, second by Sasso to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. One oh two.
Item one oh two is a request by Fifth Land Surveying and Consulting for Larry Patterson for a variance to the subdivision regulations to reduce the access easement widths from forty-nine feet to thirty feet and forty feet respectively to allow a twelve-foot wide gravel surface in lieu of a twenty-four-foot wide paved surface and to waive the requirement to install curb, gutter, sidewalk, street, light conduit, water, and sewer for the existing and proposed access easements, and to waive the requirement to improve the unnamed sixty-six foot wide right-of-way with curb, gutter, sidewalk, street light, conduit, water, sewer, and pavement as per Chapter sixteen point six of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and this is for the area located at twenty-three six forty-eight at Strato Rim Drive, and I approve with stipulations.
We have a motion by Mason and a second by Doyle to approve with stipulations. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. One oh three.
Item one oh three is a request by Chamberlain Architects for MHL LLC for a vacation right-of-way for the alley right-of-way adjacent to the area located adjacent to five oh two five oh eight and five ten and five twelve Main Street, and I approve with stipulations, or move to approve with stipulations.
We have a motion by Mason and a second by Nordstrom, and I would just like to use this opportunity to thank the two Dan's, Dan Seffner and Dan Trivie, who have been waiting patiently all night, and that this is, I know there's been a lot of discussion on other items tonight, but this really is a very, very important item, and I want to thank the two of you for your work on this, and I also want to thank Public Works and the City Attorney's Office for their hard work on getting this ready for tonight's agenda. So thank you very much to everyone who was involved in this. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Bill list, Helene.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have four additions to the bill list. One is to Hills Materials Company for the Keps Water Main Extension for the change order one F in the amount of thirteen thousand four hundred thirty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents. Second one is to J&amp;J Asphalt Company for pavement rehab, number four, change order number two F in the amount of eleven thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars and seventeen cents. Mainline contracting for the Adam Street, North Street, sanitary sewer, change order number one F for one thousand five hundred seventy-one dollars and seventy-nine cents. And the final one is RCS Construction, Inc. for the Corral Drive, Sheridan Lake Road, change order number one F in the amount of eighteen thousand six hundred sixty dollars and six cents for a total bill list of ten million two hundred ninety-one thousand seven hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Peterson, second by Doyle. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We will not have an executive session tonight, so can we have a motion to adjourn? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Gary?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to compliment my fellow councilpeople. You have picked up wonderfully on calling the question. It was such a burden for me to have to keep doing it by myself. I want to thank you all very much for taking.
Alderman Wright?
I've got to do a commercial for Veterans Day. Parade's this Friday. Starts at eleven. Anyone that wants to be in the parade, form up, nine thirty, ten thirty. There's several things happening that day that have never happened before in Rapid City on Veterans Day. Starting at eight AM, the School of Mines will be reading the killed in action in Iraq and Afghanistan, approximately six thousand names. The mayor and I are involved in that reading, but there's people from around the community, but it's sponsored by the tech, faculty, staff, students, and ROTC department at Main Street Square. It's a great deal. Then that afternoon, while they're at the Main Street Square, is hosting, we've got the exact details out, for Top Hats and Roses to do a vocal concert on patriotic music, and then at five o'clock, Potter Family, same thing. So that'll be a really great thing there. The parade will start at eleven. We will hopefully possibly have a flyover. We don't know what yet. Might be a paper airplane if nothing else, but we will do, yeah, we've got a Predator coming in. Watch out. We've got a, we'll start the parade at eleven with the normal tradition. We're going to do a little extra. We're going to do a Twenty-One Gun Salute Taps, Moment of Silence, which is traditional from World War One, the moment of silence at eleventh hour, eleventh day, eleventh month. Parade will go up to Seventh, back over to St. John Down. There's a luncheon afterwards for veterans, if anyone wants to show. We're going to have a lot of good people in the parade, various organizations, people of Melsworth, Guard, and the police and fire honor guard will be with us, and Tim Doyle's going to be an honored guest also. Anyways, I think we're going to have a wonderful day. Show up, honor your vets. It's not a day to go goofing off, it's a day to honor your veterans. So if you see a guy like Richie, buy him coffee, or Jordan, buy him coffee, or Steve. I take beer. I take beer. Well, this cool guy here. But thank you for that. It's going to be a wonderful day. The weather's good, we heard. Go for it.
We have a motion by Sasso and a second by Davis to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.